Okay, now we're on, now we'll call the meeting to order. First order of business will be an invocation led by Chaplain Tony Ledbetter from the Grace Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for being the Creator of this universe. We thank you for creating mankind to have a communion with you. Lord, we pray that you would be with each leader represented in this chamber today. Lord, give them the wisdom necessary to make the decisions according to your will. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of serving you. We thank you for the blood of Jesus Christ that cleanseth us from all unrighteousness. And Lord, we ask you to give each person in leadership today the ability to make the decisions that would affect not only this city, this county, and this state, but our nation. Lord, we ask you to meet with us today, and we give you the praise, honor, and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, give everybody a second to enter. Okay, first thing, Sherry, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we have a few changes to this morning's agenda, beginning on the changes to the consent agenda, Building and Development Services, item number 22, Final Platte, Silverleaf, Phase Four. The request was updated to include accept, execute, and record jointer and consent of the Silverleaf Community Development District, one, the platte for Silverleaf, Phase Four, and two, the supplemental declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for Silverleaf to add Silverleaf, Phase Four, and all dedications, easements, and reservations thereof. Under Parks and Natural Resources, item number 35, 2019 Suncoast Campaign for Grade Level Reading, the agreement for charitable services with the Patterson Foundation, this will be deferred to August 6. Public Safety, item number 54, the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between Manatee County and the International Association of EMTs and Paramedics Local R-5-747. The last page of the agreement was updated and replaced to include the expiration date in Article 30, Effective Date and Term. And then lastly, just a reminder and a new item for all is that this morning, we're all being a part of our First County Commission meeting that offers live closed captioning for the hearing impaired. For all the speakers at the dais and also at the podium, please speak clearly into the mic. Try not to speak over each other. As you know, closed caption sometimes has trouble translating if more than one person's talking at once, and will pick up talk behind the area. We want to thank our AV partners Encore for making the improvements during the summer recess, and also thanks to our METV partners for all their assistance in bringing this new service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Couple of announcements. We have two items that are timed certain, one at 10:00 a.m., which is the adoption of Resolution R. 1984, and then we'll take at 11 o'clock a very short break as we reconvene for the Port Authority meeting at that time. At this point, are there any items that any commissioner would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Wow. Seeing none there, that's first time in quite a while.
Need to make a note, that's the first time in history?
Yeah, I think we better...
Well, technically, Sherry pulled number 35. Oh, me too. Sorry.
Okay, the next item up is awards, presentations, and proclamations. The first one is the Employee of the Month, Mark Regis.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Sherry, Mr. Palmer. Jake Sauer, Acting Director of Public Safety. Today is an exciting day for public safety. Mark Regis, as you remember, might remember, last summer was before the Board after he returned from a hurricane deployment. He has done amazing and great things for EMS through his hurricane deployments, the PR that he's done for the county as well, along with EMS. He's really taken that and run with it. I'm not going to speak long. We have resurrected a retired employee of 35 years from EMS, Ron Rich.
He was last on.
Who was his, yeah, I'm surprised we got him here, but we did. He was his last supervisor and who nominated him, so I'm going to turn it over to Ron to speak for a minute.
Morning, Commissioners, County Administrator. Glad to be back for a few minutes. It was very easy to nominate Mark for the Employee of the Month. As the Director said, I did supervise him, and Mark's one of the nicest guys I know. He leads by the heart, and he knows his job well. He actually cares about his employees, and he was one of the reasons why I was successful. So, that with the enormous amount of time that he devotes to the department, he was callous to get our public relations effort going, and it's quite busy, so keeping our presence out there. So, I just thought he deserved some recognition for all of his hard work. He lives EMS, and I appreciate what he's done.
Good to see you. Sure.
Good morning, James Crutchfield, UMS Chief. Mark, I just want to say thank you for everything you do for your peers, everything you do for your team, and everything you do for us. Thanks. Well deserved.
Hi. Yay. Commissioners, County Administrator, thank you. And as I walk up here, the Director says in my ear, "You're never short of words." And, you know, yeah, I guess I am. I was up in the panhandle for the hurricane and got the pleasure of meeting the Governor at the time, Rick Scott. And I wasn't short of words then. I actually kind of was leaned up on a rail outside, and I looked at him, and I'm like, "So Gov, how you doing?" And it literally came out of, kind of came out of my mouth like that. And him and I actually had a really down-to-earth, very humbled conversation, and this was after a Category Five hurricane came through. They put me in charge of a county and whatnot, but I get the County Administrator walking into a meeting that I was at a couple of weeks ago with balloons and candy, and I clam up. Here before you right now, and I feel about the same way. I've been with the county a lot of years, I appreciate this. This is very humbled, very humbled by this, and I really do appreciate it. Manti County, I came here, as I tell my employees, way back in the 1900s, and I've enjoyed it every minute. It's home, it's family. I wouldn't be, wouldn't be successful if it wasn't for the folks that I'm with and around, both within public safety and outside of public safety. My parents semi-retired and chose to come back to work for Manatee County. It's been a blessing, and I appreciate every minute, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item is a certificate of recognition for the infamous Daniel West.
Infamous. I asked to do this, I was so proud of you. So proud. How are you? Nice to see you. And you, hello, hello. Nice to see you. Hey, guys. How are you? Good morning. I was wondering about that, too. What? The chambers are going to be empty after this. I don't know. Infamous Daniel West. Certificate of Recognition, Daniel West, a native of Palmetto, Florida, has served as the Manatee County Fair Manager since 2003, the Assistant Fair Manager from 2001 to 2003, and a former agriculture teacher at Palmetto High School, and continues to be involved in many other local organizations, volunteering his time to help others and serve his community. Daniel served on the Federation Board of Directors from 2005 to 2014, and as the Federation's President from 2012 to 2013, and was recently selected as the Florida Federation Affairs Executive Director. At the 2018-19 Florida Federation Affairs Annual Dinner, Daniel was inducted into the Federation's Hall of Fame, for which honors are chosen based on their commitment and contribution to the furtherance of the mission of the Federation to increase the quality of Florida's agricultural fairs. This certificate is awarded in honor of Daniel's induction into the Hall of Fame and for his service to Manatee County Fair and to the community, presented this 23rd day of July, signed by our Chair, Stephen R. Johnson. And I have to tell you that the Commissioners fought on who could award this to you today. And we all wanted to do it, so we're all standing here together, and I got the honor only because I had talked to Shirley about getting this done, right after you were inducted. So, it's an honor.
Thank you very much.
And we're so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Corrie and Mr. Palmer, thank you all so much. Thank you for all your support over the years. You know, the fair is a wonderful event here, and it's just something that, you know, all the people behind me here, they give lots of hours to do that. We have such a grassroots fair here in Manatee County. When you come out, you know, there's folks from all corners of the county participating, looking forward to putting it on every January. It's just a wonderful, wonderful event, and that goes throughout the entire state of Florida with all the other 51 fairs in the state that citizens look forward to. But of course, ours is the best here in Manatee County, and it's going to continue to be the best in the years to come. You know, this year coming up, it's the 104 years of the Manatee County Fair, January 16th through the 26th. I can't not say the date, so we'll be looking forward to a lot of announcements coming up here in the fall with entertainment, other things that you're going to see at the 2020 Manatee County Fair. But thank you all so much. I've learned so much since I've become the Fair Manager in 2003, just under the tutelage of Mr. Rickley, who was the former Fair Manager. And then Cindy Patterson, right behind me here. I tell everybody, she gets to see me at my worst. So, and I hate that for her, because she's such a sweet lady. But I want to thank all the Directors on our Board, and thank you for the opportunity to serve Manatee County. Thank you all very much.
Anyone else, Shirley?
I just want to ask a question. Mine's just for the Commission.
We have to get on the mic. It's really just for y'all. Sometimes in Palmetto, often in Palmetto, we have something that's very important to us, and we have people come, and they, we make, we recognize them and everything, but what we like to do, excuse me, and especially in this case, because each and every one of you has worked with Dan, we'd like to have the group come, and maybe if y'all could stand, and we could get a picture with all of y'all.
Absolutely.
That would be awesome. Thank you. Thanks for... Everybody's here for you.
How you doing, sweetie? Good to see you. I figured you'd be here.
I was going to say, they got to be sons. I'm in the middle. Probably have to get some help lining everything up. Come on, Shorty.
Feel free to boss us. Get your own team.
Yeah, good. Except for you.
Should we send them down? Maybe we can find someone to carry them.
Spread out a little here on this side.
Thank you for telling me that. Are you sure? Because I'm going to forget about that. Sue Revel.
First of all, I wanted to say Dan's wife and his two kids are here. Well, they were.
They still are.
And I know how proud we are of them. My family and Dan's family goes back a long ways. My dad cleared a lot of Dan's grandmother's property, and I think a lot of y'all, I think so highly of Dan. We've worked together a lot of years, done a lot of FFA things together. Kind of feel like he's family, and I've always felt that way. My dad loved this man a lot, so I can't really, it's an honor. I think Dan's the youngest person ever, probably, into the Fair Hall of Fame, and we're so proud of you. Also, I think you can thank me. I believe it was my son's reason that he became a Fair Manager. He had him three years in FFA with probably the rowdiest group of boys I've ever seen, with Patty's brother, Randy Ray, Luciano, and I mean, you want to hear about some tricks they played on an FFA teacher, Dan and I could go on for quite a while, so you can probably thank that group of boys that he became the great Fair Manager that he was. Dan, you know I love you, my family loves you, and we're so happy for you. You should move on. Going to miss you as Fair Manager, though.
Thank you. Well, I want to say also, you know, when I, after this year, when I moved solely as the Executive Director of the Florida Federation, my office is going to be in Palmetto, so I don't have to go anywhere. So, the Office of the Federation Affairs of Florida will be in Palmetto.
Very nice. Good.
All right. Thank you for making our fair so great. All of you, thank you for making our fair.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have a couple of proclamations. The first one's the Opioid Use Disorder Awareness Month.
I make a motion that we accept the proclamations.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
As a member of the Florida Medical Examiners Commission, my commission that oversees all the medical examiners in the state of Florida is governor-appointed, and I've been on it since Donna Hayes left years ago, and our commission actually puts together the report that we see about all the deaths related to drugs and what drugs they are and what we found, and I usually send that to the press locally every year when we get that. We have seen some improvement, but then we have seen some deaths. Some people are getting more creative and finding other ways to get high, unfortunately. So, this is very near and dear to a lot of our hearts, especially Manatee County. So, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'm going to introduce Mr. James. Whereas on November 29th, 2018, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention stated for the life expectancy in the United States has declined, largely due to deaths from drug overdose and suicide. And whereas the National Safety Council reported on January 14th, 2019, that for the first time, Americans are more likely to die from an accidental opioid overdos, overdose, sorry, than from a motor vehicle crash. And whereas, according to the data published in March 2019 by the National Institute of Drug Abuse, there are recent, there has recently been a tremendous surge in Florida of overdose deaths involving opioids, especially fentanyl and fentanyl analogs. And whereas the impact of the opioid crisis is apparently throughout the Florida State Court system, where judicial officers and staff members serving in a variety of court divisions have been or will be involved in the judicial administration of cases involving individuals with opioid use disorder. And whereas, April 24th, 2019, Charles T. Kennedy, Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Florida, entered a proclamation declaring that July 2019 shall be known within the State Court system as a month of awareness regarding opioids and treatment for opioid use disorder. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that July 2019 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Opioid Use Disorder Awareness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of July, signed by our Chairman, Steve Johnson. And I'd like to introduce Mr. James. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation. The Office of State Courts Administrators and Chief Justice Kennedy decided that this month would be focusing on opioid use disorder awareness. We're going to have a panel on July 25th from 11:00 to 12:30. We're going to have various agencies. We're going to have Health Department, Centers, Stone, First Step, EMS, Sheriff Department. We're also going to have Department of the DEA, they're going to be there, Drug Enforcement Administration, but they're not going to be on the panel, but they're going to be there to listen to what we have to say as a community, so that when they go back, they can do some planning, because most of us probably don't realize the DEA does more than enforce just putting people in jail. They also have other programs, education and prevention programs as well. We have a few going on right here in this county that they've got going on with some of our schools. So, we want everybody to come out, it's open to the public, be on the second floor, the jury assembly room at the courthouse, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. Our goal is to educate not only our courts, the 12 judicial, but also the public. We don't want to just talk about what has happened, but we also want to leave there with some plans going forward, because while we're still battling with the opioids, methamphetamine is becoming a real problem now in the area, and so we also want to talk about what can we do as a, as a community, all the different agencies coming together to combat this scourge, and just inviting everybody to come out, open to the public. Thank you once again for your support, and I hope to see you guys there. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely.
Okay, the...
Mr. Bellamy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Reggie?
Mr. James.
Why keep forgetting that?
I just want to thank Mr. James for all the work that he do. We've had opportunities, we were in a conference last week, and there are a lot of things in our community as far as methamphetamine and opioid, and obviously cocaine, that from the community standpoint, we do need to have the agencies to unite to make sure we can find a way to make, have a united front in combat some of these drug issues, but I want to make sure it's very clear that we are appreciative of all the work that you do, the known and the unknown work, and thank you for your fight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, proclamation is a recognition of Smokey Bear's 75th birthday wildlife prevention, and it looks like the birthday boy's in the room.
Birthday boy.
Or girl.
Girl, yeah. Got to be politically correct now.
Just say bear.
And he or she see?
I don't think Smokey can see.
It's a great day for reading proclamations. What can I say? Whereas, on August 9th, 2019, Smokey Bear will celebrate his 75th birthday, which also marks his wildfire prevention campaign as the longest-running public service campaign in U.S. history. Smokey's message is as relevant today as it was in 1944, as more people are living closer to natural areas. So, no retirement for Smokey, sorry. And whereas, the mission of the Florida Forest Service is to protect Florida and its people from the dangers of wildland fires and manage to forest resources through a stewardship ethic to assure they are available for future generations. And whereas, in the last five years, Florida Forest Service wildland firefighters have responded to more than 315 wildfires in Manatee County that burned 4,094.6 acres, in many instances threatening communities and adjoining infrastructure. And whereas, the Florida Forest Service is actively engaged in promoting and conducting prescribed burns and other wildfire mitigation practices to reduce the size and intensity of wildfires. In the last five years, the Florida Forest Service has provided 14,759,000 burn authorizations to local ranchers, farmers, and land managers in Manatee County to maintain and restore natural ecosystems and reduce the wildfire hazard. And whereas, Smokey Bear will celebrate his 75th birthday at Charlotte County Sports Park on Saturday, August 3rd, 2019, with birthday cake, food, displays from several agencies, live music, and the announcement of Smokey Bear's 75th birthday scavenger hunt winner. And Smokey Bear will be throwing out the first pitch before the baseball game.
How's he going to do that?
Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida congratulate Smokey Bear on his 75th birthday and his continued efforts to remind citizens to be careful when using fire in natural areas. And the Board commends the men and women of the Florida Forest Service for their partnership with Manatee County and Smokey Bear in wildfire prevention and mitigation. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of July, 2019, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, signed by our Chair, Stephen R. Johnson. I'm one of the 14,000 people that have asked for a burn permit in Manatee County. Let me tell you, the Florida Fire Service is excellent. I personally don't get to speak with Smokey very often, but the buddy beside him answers the phone, and they're always there, and they're great to work with, and we should be very proud of the group in Manatee County. They do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for helping us celebrate Smokey's 75th birthday. Smokey's message to us has evolved over the years. He started out in 1944 telling us that only you can prevent forest fires, and today he tells us that only you can prevent wildfires. And the difference is, we have learned how beneficial the use of prescribed fire is, and Manatee County has embraced that new message. The natural resource and parks folks that are here today, use prescribed fire regularly on your preserves. It helps maintain the ecological health, and it also keeps the fuels low so that when a lightning strike fire does happen, the fire is much less intense and doesn't threaten communities nearly as much. So, we appreciate the partnership with them. The celebration that we're having for Smokey is next Saturday, August 3rd, down in Charlotte County at the sports park. It's from 2:00 to 5:00. There's a Stone Crabs game right after it, so we're expecting a pretty big crowd, food vendors, music, lots of kids' activities. It's a free event to the public, so everyone's welcome to come. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, next is World Ranger Day.
We got some Rangers. Come on up.
Ranger, Ranger, Ranger Man.
I don't know if this is on purpose. I was thinking of throwing up. Okay, we're bringing up Smokey's army. They're coming up. Come on down here, guys.
Somebody better help Smokey throw that first pitch.
Somebody better help Smokey throw that first pitch.
Who is watching the controlled burns right now?
Come on. We've all got mothers, wait till them on TV. Come on down.
All right, this is a great group of people that work so hard for us, and I wasn't kidding when I said that they were Smokey's army. Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas World Ranger Day is celebrated around the world on July 31st each year on the anniversary of the founding of the International Ranger Federation, IRF, an organization that supports the work of Rangers. And whereas Manatee County's public conservation lands, parks, and historic sites are a valuable community asset and vital to our way of life. And whereas all Rangers throughout Manatee County provide customer service, natural and cultural resource management, interpretive services, wildlife rescues, prescribed burns, like Smokey was talking about was important, enforcement of park rules and technical knowledge, and maintain the comfort and safety of all visitors. And whereas a dedicated corps of engineers are key protectors of the parks and conservation lands throughout Manatee County, not only protecting but also restoring, maintaining, and interpreting these lands and places to provide safe access for all the public to enjoy. And whereas Rangers provide assistance, guidance, and extensive knowledge to enrich the overall visitor experience. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that July 31st, 2019, shall be known, designated, and set aside as World Ranger Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present, voting this 23rd day of July 2019, signed by our Chair, Stephen R. Johnson. And this is our crew, and I'm sure that Charlie would like to say something about them.
Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Charlie Hunsaker, Manatee County, Parks and Natural Resources. I would just like to offer some numbers of participation and effect while I ask Mike Elswich, who heads up the Division of Manatee County Rangers, and Aiden Stockdale, our interpreters, to also speak to you today. We talked about prescribed fire and wildfire. Last year, the Rangers that are behind me and three on vacation and one at an appointment were able to apply prescribed fire on 11,600 acres of our conservation lands in Manatee County. And that's a significant advance from the years I remember struggling with trying to meet 1,000 acres or 2,000 acres. And that prescription, that controlled burn, is done under the aegis of a prescribed plan that is approved by the Florida Forest Service. And as Mike Keegan had mentioned, we're dedicated to providing those services so that we can maintain a natural habitat and a safe environment from wildfire situations. Rangers across Manatee County include the National Park Service at DeSoto Memorial. They include the State of Florida Park Service at Terracilla Park. There's a Ranger here from Terracilla Park, State Park. Lake Manatee State Park is probably well-known for its camping. Gamble Mansion, of course, is a state park. Mayaica River State Park, the last I knew, in Manatee County, is the largest, in Manatee and Sarasota County, at 40-plus thousand acres, is the largest state park in the state of Florida. These activities to us are precious. They're part of our lifeways, they're part of what we do, our passion, and I'm very honored to be part of the system that works to protect our natural resources there. Mike?
Mike Elswich, short and sweet, because we actually have a prescribed fire to get to a little bit later this morning, if it's dry enough. The word privilege is taking on a little bit of a darker connotation lately. We're all supposed to check our privilege, but it is absolutely a privilege to serve you all, our leadership and citizens every day. So it's nice to be thanked by you publicly, but we're thanked by the public literally every day, so it's really, you know, the job is its own reward, so. But we have a team now that is, has better morale than I've ever seen, you know, and I've worked in other agencies. We have a well-motivated team, even when we're picking up dead mullet in triple-digit heat index, these folks all have a smile on their face for some reason, so. But anyways, but yeah, it's a privilege. Thank you.
Aiden Stockdale with Parks and Natural Resources. On behalf of our team with the Volunteer Education Division, we're thankful for your all's support. We are tasked with being out there engaging the public. We work with thousands of individuals every year, hundreds of volunteers getting the message out about the preserves and working hand-in-hand with the land management experts behind me. So we're thankful for your support and our continued ability to get the public outdoors and involved in the public lands that we have throughout Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with Mike that the job itself is a reward, and I was just really glad to be invited and participate, so thank you.
Are we the most visitors of all? The real ones.
And that's not true. And on behalf of the National Park Service, despite being federal, we are a community park, so we have neighbors every single day, multiple times a day, in addition to people coming because of the recognition of our arrowhead and our flat hat coming to DeSoto. But we're honored to be a part of the community, and we wouldn't be a great community without, or a great park without the great community that we're in, so thanks to all of you from the National Park Service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whitmore has a comment.
I just have to say something. Every year I go out with Charlie, we go to the preserves, and for those of you that haven't been to Duette, how many acres is that, like 19,000?
Plus it up, 21,000.
21,000, and we've been in the middle of nowhere, and they take, and I've been up on these gigantic platforms that you go, and you can see the whole preserve, and they show you where they're going to do these prescribed burns. And for the kids here today, it's so that they burn down so that the animals can reach the vegetation, and when it's too high, they can't reach it. So you do this all over the entire county, and there's other reasons why you do it, too. And I have to admit, in all the years I've been here, I've, you guys in this department have, I can tell you love your job. Parks and Natural Resources, everybody here loves in the Natural Resource Department and the parks. I just want to thank you, and I know you're being recognized today, but we really, really do thank you. We have probably the most compliments we all get is from our parks, and especially in utilities when the water lines are broken, so they get fixed, you know? We get a lot of thank yous for that, too, but I just want to thank you, and it's nice to see, and I'm, nice to see Aiden for his promotion, and the last two times you've been with us, you've done a great job, I have to say that. Good job.
Okay, Commissioner Ball.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but then I had to. You know, I got to tell you, we have a lot of different departments that come before us, and it's always wonderful to hear from everyone, but I can tell you that you guys are rock stars. You know, for you to stand there and thank us for your jobs, and, you know, we just don't hear that very often, because it is hot, what y'all do is not an easy task, and this includes state or federal, and I've been to your, what you're talking about. But, you know, it just shows the unity in your department, and it's wonderful to see. And I just thank you for that, for sharing that with all of us and with the public, for the public to hear that, because sometimes, you know, that's not the public, that's not the image the public has, and so you guys just rock, and I thank you so much. And by the way, on Duette, I can tell you, I think most of the Commissioners have been out to Duette, but the best, that's the best ever. That's, he's laughing, she knows why.
I heard.
Yeah, when we were running for office, we went out to Duette at the same time, and we were on ATVs. Oh my gosh. I'm ready to do it again, just so you know, anytime, call me. Thanks a bunch for all you do, seriously.
Okay, thank you all very much. Keep up the good work. Much appreciated. Answers my question. I was wondering what they were out doing.
No, they were here to tour.
Are you waving to Smokey again?
They just wanted to see, they just wanted to come down.
Oh, we missed the good stuff. Where are they from? Palmetto U.S. Oh, nice. Thanks for being here, kids.
Yeah. They're from the U.S.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move on to Citizens' comments. These are comments for consideration for future agenda items. I've got a pretty lengthy number of people that want to speak, and we do have a 10 o'clock time certain, so we'll try to maneuver around all this so you don't have to necessarily sit here all day waiting for your opportunity. The first one I have is Timothy Pams.
Uh-oh. Well, that one misses. Ah, here he comes.
Maybe, looks like Pams.
Good morning, Board members. That's Timothy Paris.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The reason I'm here today, I have an issue with a property I purchased. On August 25th, 2017, I purchased a property, 2924 13th Street Court East. On paper, it states one thing, tax shows different things. I've been through building apartment, tax pay's apartment, for the last year, I've been going back and forward, and in doing so, there's some things that I found out. The property had an addition that was added to it in 97. Permit was pulled 9/1997, issued on 10/1697. Building passed the final 7198. Between 98 and 2002, there were no activity on the building permit. That's five years. That's a long time it took, five years. There's no final inspection, nor is there a final survey on the original structure nor the addition. According to LDC Land Development Code 513-2, Standards and Reviews, a certificate of occupancy shall be issued only after the premises has been inspected and found to comply with all the applicable development standards and requirements for the zoning districts in which they are located. That the use of the structure conformed to the plans and the specification which the building permit was issued. Now, the problem occurred between 98 and 2002. There's no building final inspection, but there is a CO. So, and seeing that, I would like to have the CO rescind it, because there's no matter what I do with the problems that I found in this, I don't have the time or patience for it. I'm going strictly what's on paper. If that's it, I would definitely appreciate your help, and a little bit more time to explain to you exactly what I found. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sherri, would you like to?
Excuse me, Mr. Parrish, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the information. We will have someone get in touch with you and get further details to help you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
County Administrator, the concern is this has been, I've spoken to him, I haven't met him directly, I've spoken to him on the phone a number of times, and the thing that I want to prevent is to attempt to relieve his frustration of biking forward, because there's been a lot of emails. He's made some communications with Mr. Bernard, and there's, from what I was told, that there may have been exhausted his options, but we want to make sure, whatever the things that can be done from the county standpoint, that they are addressed, because again, since 1998, this is what he's been going through.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Somebody's going to get ahold of you.
I'll walk out with you.
Thank you very much.
I'll walk out with you.
Okay. I'm going to figure out how to organize this best, so we can try to get through it judiciously. The next person is Ryan Bray. Again, you have three minutes.
I'm here regarding the panhandling that's been going on in Manatee Avenue. I don't think I need to go over my story, I think it's been well-publicized. But I believe I've spoke with numerous of you that this is a problem we're having in this community, and it's getting worse, and we're going to have to take action, whether it's from this fire or somebody else, something's got to be done. We just had last week, the individual had a knife pulled on, just because they didn't get their monetary compensation that they were expecting. But the first thing I want to do is, for the record, read Florida statute 3.16 spot Obstruction of public streets, highways, and roads. One, it is unlawful for any person or persons willfully to obstruct the free, convenient, and normal use of any public street, highway, or road by impeding, hindering, stifling, retarding, or restraining traffic or passage thereon, by standing or approaching motor vehicles thereon, or by endangering the safe movement of vehicles or pedestrians traveling thereon, and any person or persons who violate the provisions of this subsection upon conviction shall be cited, not may be cited, shall. Shall means must, for the pedestrian violation, punishable as provided in Chapter 318. What seems to be the issue from my talking with the police department, who firmly seem to want the panhandler situation taken care of, is their hands seem to be tied. They have to catch the violation as it occurs, which means they have to sit on the corner and wait for the panhandler to enter the street to collect the money. That's where the violation, according to state statute, resides. Then you look at Daytona, what they did in February of 2019. They, through their ordinance, has more or less, according to reports, eliminated 90% of the panhandling in that community. Simple things that I would think would be constitutional for the Commissioners to put into an ordinance would be the removal or the violation as it occurs if you are within 120 feet from a signal intersection, be it a stop sign or traffic signals, soliciting, that would be a violation. By doing that, I would be in violation by mirroring a panhandler, unless I had a permit to do such. On top of that, it would be, is that my three minutes? Okay, that's it.
Thank you. The next one is Brian Orlando.
Brian Orlando, good morning, everybody. Commenting on the same thing Mr. Bray commented on. It seems to be a problem that's not being addressed, even though, as he stated, it is against the law, quote-unquote. I personally had an incident just the other night, I'm driving my grandson home at 9 o'clock after going to movies, stopped at the intersection on 64 and 27th, not allowed to turn red on red, so I'm waiting for the light to change. He proceeded out in front of my vehicle, over my side, I rolled the window down, I said, "Sir, it's dark and it's at night, you need to get out of the road." He proceeded to walk back in front of me, raised his hands and say, "Well, run me over," shouting it over and over again. Finally, he moved. I reported to Sheriff's Office, which referred me to the Braden Police Offices, office, I told them, they handled it. Orlando City has this little thing where they take anybody that has minor infractions and put them to work inside their jail. They will offer them a day for a day, if they get 30 days for whatever, jaywalking, whatever it is, retail theft, they give them a day for a day. You work in the kitchen, you get out in 15 days. Perfect way to put these guys that are homeless, no meals, no job. Perfect way to put these guys that are homeless, no meals, no job, to work. Now, I agree that panhandling is a problem for some people. It's no choice. A guy on 70 has no legs. No way he gets employment. But when I see guys out there, half my age, 20, 30 years old, standing with a sign saying, "No, homeless, can't get no work," there's work everywhere. You need the initiative to go get it. These people lack the initiative because they have the ability to not do anything but stand in the corner and get the sorry people that feel sorry for them to give them money. It needs to be enforced, one way or the other. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Jill Rockline.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Jill Rockline, and Manatee County has been my home for my family for 45 years. I consider myself a caring and empathetic person. But our growing panhandler crisis needs our attention now. Panhandling jobs are creating adverse ripple effects throughout our communities. Most concerning is our safety. Young gals now need to carry mace while pumping gas. Women need bagger escorts leaving grocery stores. All of us have been forced into a heightened level of fear. We applaud Ryan Bray for his courage and efforts in igniting this firestorm for change in our city and in many cities across the country. Panhandlers standing peaceful and harmless on the street corners for voluntary offering is no longer. They are now in parking lots, at gas station pumps, and standing too close for comfort, pacing the medians next to our cars, demanding and volatile. I do not give panhandlers cash as they most likely spend it on drugs and alcohol. Instead, I would offer fast food, bottled waters, granola bars, not any longer. Panhandlers only want cash. I donate to organizations who make a direct and wider impact for the truly inneed homeless Many organizations provide free help to those in need. A couple of months ago, an out-of-town friend and I were leaving the Beachway Chase Bank, and suddenly, the same now infamous panhandler was in our personal space demanding cash, threatened us, and we fled for our safety. How infuriating to watch him playing the victim, knowing he's the penetrator. So why would a panhandler turn down a $15-an-hour job, we ask? He must be making more money, tax-free, hustling and threatening the citizens. Please consider enforcing safer panhandling locations, panhandling work permits, accountability, and consequences. If Dayton, Ohio can restore peace in their city by enforcing a panhandling safety hazard ordinance, so can Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are the only cards I have on panhandling, but I am going to go ahead and open it up in case there is anybody else in the audience that would like to come down. You'll have three minutes to discuss strictly just the panhandling issue at this point.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Van Austinbridge. I am a lifelong resident of District 3, Northwest Bradenton, and also in Holmes Beach. West Bradenton has, throughout my lifetime, as I have, has aged, but it has started to deteriorate as well, and we have a vagrancy problem in this community, started in the urban core. It has gone unchecked, and as a result, it has spread outward throughout our community. I don't spend much time in Lakewood Ranch, but I know that it's spread westward into Manatee County, not just at intersections, but also, as we just heard, shopping centers, gas station parking lots, that sort of thing. And you know, we're a kind, gracious, giving community. Centerstone exists. Turning Points exists at taxpayer money, at taxpayer expense. If someone is truly in need, then that person can go, can get the resources that they need to improve their situation. However, I think we're looking at some folks with a drug problem, and I think we're also looking at folks who are passing on an honest day's work in order to stand out there and beg for money from empathetic passersby, people who are already being taxed to provide services for these folks, by the way. I don't come to you with a solution on a silver platter. I'm a citizen. That's not my job. That's your job. I think that the laws do exist to stop this. I understand that there's a freedom of speech, a First Amendment issue that struck this down, an original law. However, there are multiple behaviors involved in panhandling that go just beyond holding the sign, and I think that you can, as much as I hate to say this, regulate, hate that word, but as much as I dislike government regulation, I think that the government can regulate other behaviors involved in panhandling, and I think that you can curb it that way. You know, I was talking with a friend of mine the other day about this, and her 15-year-old daughter was sitting at the table while we were talking, and she chimed in and says, "Those guys are so creepy, the way they're staring in the car and looking at me." And I sat there a second, and I was like, you know, she's going to be driving by herself in like six months, and she'll be at these intersections, she'll have to fill up her own tank of gas, and there she'll be. And remember, vagrancy is a crime. There's that as well. But ultimately, I think that this is simply an issue of loopholes that need to be closed. You know, some people are here, and they're frustrated, and they're upset with the board, and you know, to be honest, they probably have a right to be. You drive around, I'm sure, on the same streets that the rest of us are driving around on, and you see this, and is it something the board should have proactively addressed? Yes. But as a good friend of mine recently said at Tiger Bay, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second-best time is today." So hopefully, you can get on board with this. This is a grassroots upwelling of support, mostly on social media. Mr. Bray, of course, was the start of it, but now, here we are, so let's resolve it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come down and speak? Yes, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kathleen DuPont. I'm here for a different reason, but since this topic came up, why I'm here, I just wanted to give you an idea of what I've seen. The intersection of Lowe's at State Road 70 and 73, 93, I've noticed, we were in the parking lot one day, my husband and I coming out, and a girl was getting out of her car closer to where the restaurants are there, and she had a guitar. And so my husband said to me, "Where do you think she's going?" And I said, "Maybe she's playing in one of the coffee shops over there." I have no clue. He goes, "Let's watch for a minute." We watched her for five minutes, changed into an outfit, get her guitar ready. She got out of a fairly new car, newer car than I have, new car, white car parked on the end, walked through the woods, and stood on the corner when you come off the highway from southbound and played the guitar. So to some of these people, they're not homeless, and they don't need any kind of help. They just know that this is a job that they do, and her hours are probably between 1 and 3 on a Sunday afternoon, and that's what she goes and does. And even though she's not actually coming up to the car, causing a problem, she is because drivers are putting their hand out, and she's walking over to them and picking the money up. So I just wanted to just give you an idea of some of the kinds that I've seen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing nobody else move to some Commissioner comments regarding the issue of panhandling, Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you very much, and I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your day to come here and speak to us. It's really important that we hear your comments. I also have to say a special thanks to Mr. Bray, who's really shined a light on this, because that national attention has really got the attention of everyone here. So here's what I want to say. It is our responsibility up here to do a couple of things. To protect the health, safety, and welfare is primarily our responsibility, right? And so we have to look for opportunities to help the panhandlers who need help and who want help. We need to make that bridge to get them the help they need, and we need to protect the safety of our residents who live here and feel intimidated and threatened, okay? We also have a responsibility to our business owners. I have been contacted by a couple of business owners who say, "I'm not going to renew my lease because the panhandling is so bad outside of my business." We have a responsibility to tourists who visit our area. We spend a lot of money and effort trying to bring people here to beautiful Manatee County. Can you imagine what some of them think when they see beggars at every intersection? So I want you to know, I am very sympathetic to anyone who needs help. I have talked to the Executive Director of Centerstone as early as yesterday about this issue. I have talked to the Executive Director of Turning Points. Both of those organizations are regularly out on our streets, talking with these people, offering them services, asking them what they can do, and the reason that you don't see a lot of them leave is because they choose not to leave. That is what I'm being told by the offices that offer assistance to them. So I understand First Amendment rights, and I'll fight for them every single day, but I also, we also have to protect the rights of the people who live here and visit here. And so I hope that this board will make a decision today to ask our county attorney to draft something that is within the law and helps to improve our community. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ball.
Yeah, I didn't know, obviously, that we were going to have so many citizens come forward today, and I was actually going to bring this up under Commissioner comments. So, you know, even though I know Kevin mentioned Lakewood Ranch, and we haven't had a lot of that issue, but that being said, there's no reason why we might not start having that issue. But the problem is, I mean, I saw him on the way here this morning when I was coming to our meeting, so you know, it is an issue. And you know, the bottom line is, our main objective here as being elected by our peers is their safety. I mean, that is number one. That should be number one. So the concern is, and I was going to ask, actually, that the county attorney look into other counties and what they've done to make this issue better than what it is, because I do believe there is something that can be done in this county. I do believe it is getting worse and worse and worse. I also have been told, and I know over the years, that a lot of the people doing this, they don't want a 15-hour or a $15-an-hour job, because you were right. They can make more money just standing on the corner, playing the guitar, doing whatever the case may be, just begging. So it is an issue that we need to look at. I'm sure there is some way to enforce panhandling so we can protect our citizens. I think that that is a valid claim. So you know, I would ask, and I'll go ahead at this time and make the motion to have the county attorney look into ways to be able to enforce this terrible issue that we're having, so...
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And I thank you for that, because I do believe this is a problem that's getting out of hand. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, my office can draft legislation every day, all day, but ultimately, it's got to be defensible in a court of law, and given the current climate within the courts when it comes to panhandling-related regulation, this will be a tall order. So I want you to know that off the bat, okay? Nevertheless, my office will undertake any lawful instruction given to us. I would also suggest that maybe a study is needed dealing with the secondary effects of panhandling and what those might be, whether it's littering and trash within the rights of way, whether it is safety-related concerns. One of the important features of being able to defend such regulations when they are challenged in court is that the local government has undertaken an effective study of the second-hand effects of the prohibited activity. Our Adult Entertainment Ordinance is a classic example of that. And so that's my commentary for the moment. Again, the courts have not looked favorably upon the regulation of panhandling in and of itself of late, and that's true in both the state and federal courts within the state of Florida, ultimately relying upon the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in the matter of Reed v. Town of Gilbert. And so, you know, I just want you to know the realities and the backdrop against which you're about to give this assignment to me.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Benak.
You took me off the board. I was one.
Oh. Probably by design.
Yeah, you probably did.
Go ahead.
You aren't going to stop me from talking, trust me.
He just took me off, so I'm going to go after you. He does it to me all the time. Don't worry about it.
Am I on?
Wait, remember, we're being closed captioned, so we have to be careful. Okay. I was actually at Turning Points Friday delivering some clothes and stuff, and it was busting to the seams. I mean, I've worked there off and on for years, and my husband and I, he did surgery on a lot of the homeless people, and then he retired, but I still go there and deliver medical supplies that are expired from where I work and clothes and all that kind of stuff. I've been very, you know, close to this issue. A lot of you know, most of my young life, I was homeless, so I get it. These guys aren't homeless. It's a danger, and I actually talked to Mickey, I sent him an email Sunday night per somebody that sent me a message asking me to look at the Daytona ordinance, and Mickey said he would be prepared to talk about it today. I also, that's what you said at our briefing yesterday, so if you aren't... That's the only reason why I brought this up, because I asked you to look at it, and you said I'd be prepared to discuss it today.
Commissioner, here was my commentary. Indeed, I'm prepared to discuss the general subject of panhandling with you today, hence the comments that I just made. Have I studied the City of Daytona Beach ordinance? I have not.
Has anybody looked at it?
I have not. I received it by email yesterday.
No, I was just asking.
It's been less than 24 hours, so no, I have not.
I think Ms. Zamboni is working her way to the podium.
Maybe ACA Zamboni has studied it. I personally have not.
Let me finish, and then if you want to bring it up. The problem is, is this was brought to our board a couple of years ago from the sheriff, and the reason why, the sheriff's legal counsel said that the current ordinance that we had was unenforceable, it was unconstitutional. So I think the cities joined us also because they kind of went under our umbrella. So this is a county that was direct, that was made a change in our ordinance per our sheriff's request and our legal counsel's deliberation. So I can understand Mickey's hesitancy, but when you see them out there in the middle of a medium, I think that was something the sheriff said that they could enforce, because you can't be obstruction visual at all. If they're approaching you, that's not legal either. They're supposed to be on their right of way and not bothering you. But the problem is, it's on 75th Street West, I think that's Manatee County. Okay, that's the sheriff. How long is it going to be until he gets there? And the guy may be gone by then. I mean, they're... So it's all about enforcement, too. And so I'd like to know, since you had a chance to scan it, if there's something that others are doing better that the sheriff could live with, and the cities and all the law enforcement and our legal, I would be in favor of this motion, but I want to make sure that it's legal and we don't go down this route again, because we had two or three meetings on this with the sheriff here because of this.
So good morning, Commissioners. Kate Zamboni, Assistant County Attorney. I did have a chance to review the City of Daytona Beach's ordinance. I, too, have been very interested in tracking this issue, because when we redrafted the county's ordinance to basically remove panhandling and solicitation from what's being regulated and focus instead on the conduct within our rights of ways and streets in line with the Florida statute, I was curious to see how the City of Daytona thought they could get around this. I will note a couple of things. That ordinance has only been in place since February of 2019. They have not been challenged in court yet, and I did read an article with a statement from the ACLU saying that they didn't intend to challenge it. I think the City of Daytona Beach is going to have a problem defending their ordinance because they still regulate that First Amendment activity called panhandling. And what you have to understand is, when you're dealing with First Amendment activities and regulations, there's three levels of scrutiny that can be applied by a court. And when you're in the world of content-based regulation, which I think the City of Daytona Beach's ordinance is, they're going to be subject to the most strict form of analysis. It's called strict scrutiny. And to survive strict scrutiny, the city is going to have to demonstrate a compelling state interest... state interest, and that they've implemented the least restrictive means available to accomplish that interest. That is nearly impossible to do. Almost nothing survives strict scrutiny. The lower level is called intermediate scrutiny, and that's where our ordinance falls, because our ordinance is not content-based. It is what they call time, place, and manner-based. So we're regulating conduct in certain places, and the manner in which it's done. It's neutral about what the message is, but we are regulating speech in what's called a traditional public forum. And so that's what puts us into the world of the intermediate scrutiny. And our burden, if we were to be challenged, would be to show not a compelling state interest, but a significant state interest, so it's a little lower. And instead of having to show that it's the least restrictive means, we simply have to show that it's narrowly tailored to serve that interest, and that we've left other means available. So I feel good about our ordinance being defensible. And to the, and when we proposed that ordinance, it was meant to see, let's see how effective this is, knowing we could change it. And what I think would be the best, as Mr. Palmer said, is if we had some empirical data that showed where this is failing to serve our state interest. And it would be best to have that data before we adopted new ordinance language, because that would ultimately make it more defensible than collecting it after the fact. Notwithstanding the anecdotal evidence, it's all very interesting, but if we were to impose something more restrictive than we currently have, we would need the data to demonstrate why this version didn't really work, and why we need to become a little bit more restrictive. Just to complete the analysis, the lowest level of analysis that would apply is rational basis. That would apply to content-neutral regulations in non-public forums. And so, we basically can't get there, because we're dealing with streets and sidewalks.
And we have the firemen that do their boot drive, and we, this was brought up at the last meeting when we had this ordinance in place. Technically, they shouldn't be doing it either, but then we had to eliminate it, so, and actually, they kept still doing it. And I'd like to know, because Misty has brought this up a few times, what are they, I'd like you to look if they have one, an ordinance in Sarasota, because I, you know, I represent the entire county, and I do drive down to Sarasota. I don't see it like I do here lately. And I see it out east. I see it out east. I don't see it just in West Bradenton. I see a lot in West Bradenton, because I live on the island, but I do see it out east, and I don't see as much in Sarasota, so I don't know what their ordinance is, but--
The ordinance is not all that different, but again, I think the enforcement is really the key. If there are areas where this is known to happen a lot, maybe having regular patrolling, because I do understand how it's hard to catch somebody, because these incidents don't persist for long periods of time, so by the time somebody reports it. But if there are areas, and they could be patrolled, that might start creating more of a deterrent effect. So, my recommendation would be to try to enforce what we have a little bit more strictly through the help of law enforcement, and then while we conduct our studies, and then see if there's something more restrictive needed.
Commissioners, I have also heard, again, anecdotally, that county court judges in Sarasota are routinely throwing out the cases that come to them for citations regarding violations of the Sarasota ordinance. So, it's a tough cycle.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Commissioner Benak?
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear the enforcement, because I live near University Parkway, and there is significant panhandling that occurs on the University Parkway corridor. And always, almost always, when you're at the corner of University and 41, in front of the Ringling Museum, there are panhandlers there.
Absolutely.
I watch them driving with their cars. I watch them get out. I watch them take breaks.
Yep.
Change out with certain people. I mean, there's regulars that panhandle there. We're not alone in this situation, but it is multifaceted. You know, I'm glad that the woman who was aggressive and came out with enough, she got arrested, you know? And that's because you were able to pinpoint who that person was and go after them and arrest that. But that is not normally the case. You're not normally going to have these folks be that aggressive and in that situation. So, it's a question of whether or not we're going to fund enforcement. How are we going to do that? We need to have a work session, I believe, to talk about this. We're not alone. The cities are dealing with this. They're, you know, having the same situation, so. And this issue is not alone in the state of Florida. This is a national issue, you know? Homelessness, panhandling, yeah, it is different. The folks that are out there panhandling, I do doubt that they're homeless. They're seeing this as a way to make money. And, you know, when you see their signs, you know they're getting good at it. You know that people are funding them. And all of the agencies, we know, they're telling, "Do not give them money. Cut them off from their source. Do not reward them for their efforts." And yeah, they're going to become more aggressive if that works for them. But that aggressiveness, that attack on folks, we need to focus on that. We need to make sure that they cannot do that. But in order to do that, we're going to have to have enforcement capabilities, and we're going to have to work with our, you know, sheriff and our, the city police force. So I would hope that we look at doing the most aggressive ordinance that we can do and be supportive, constitutionally, obviously. Yes, they have rights to free speech, but they do not have rights to aggressively approach citizens demanding money. So we need to make sure that we do have the information. We need to back up an ordinance and work to see how we can enforce this. And I'm supportive of the ordinance, I think, or the motion. I think that's what it's saying, that we're going to look at that, but I think we're going to have to have a team approach with our law enforcement officials and with the cities to make sure that we can, you know, don't just push the problem in one location or another.
Okay. I have just, you know, one comment, I think, again, is, you know, these people, the panhandlers are all pretty bright. I've decided, because I've had a lot of conversations with Jean Brown at the city, and in our areas in West Bradenton, they quickly move from the county property to the city property. So then it becomes, well, who's going to enforce it? You know? So I think it's imperative that if we're going to go forward with, you know, some type of additional looking at an ordinance, we should, you know, talk with the city of Bradenton, get maybe their attorney involved. Same with the city of Palmetto, because, you know, a lot of our property overlaps these different cities, and these guys just go back and forth, depending on who shows up, you know? And like I said, I mean, the most classic place is that corner of Cortez and 43rd, where one side, by Applebee's is the county, on the other side is the city, and these guys just move back and forth, you know, constantly. And we call MSO, and they come out, and they go, "Oh, that's a city problem," you know? And the city comes out and goes, "Oh, that's a county problem." So, you know, as much as we want to put a county ordinance in, I think we need to really work hand-in-hand with the cities. And, you know, this is, I think, would be a very appropriate topic at our next, you know, League of Cities meeting--
Council of Governments.
That's coming up very shortly--
Thursday.
To do, put it on the agenda, and let's, you know, all, you know, get in on this and figure out how to, I guess, you know, compose an ordinance that's enforceable, that we all, you know, can sit there and look at, type of thing. So--
It's sued.
You know, that's, those are kind of my thoughts, I think, whether, you know, that and a work session or something, because it's a very complicated issue. And like I say, these people, you know, are pretty, you know, pretty coy and smart, how they move back and forth. I mean, they know the game, you know, better than we do.
Better than we do.
You know? Exactly. So, Commissioner Bellamy?
Yes, I wrote a couple of things down. Some of the statements have already been made, but it does sound like the Council of Government. We need this meeting in order for us to get on the same page. From what I understand, I was just informed that we do have, in a local agreement between the cities to address issues like this. However, do we have a strategic enforcement approach? And what I mean by that, it does no good for a Manatee County Sheriff's patrol car to pull up, because they're going to see them coming. We have undercover cars doing a lot of other things. So what can we do to strategically enforce this and let the panhandlers know that we're going to have a united front, and we do not want this in our community? I think through the Council of Government meeting, if we can come to the same page, and, you know, they do things for a lot of different things, for public safety. I think this is at the forefront now. We hear your cry, and we're very, very thankful for the lead and the charge that you've taken, and we have a responsibility to come together and to make sure that we strengthen our ordinance and identify some ways that we can take and make sure that the stance is there. I do commend Turning Points and Centerstone. There's a couple of variables there, in my opinion, though. We do have some individuals that are homeless, that do have some mental health issues, and those things cannot go, you know, unnoticed and undiscussed. There's a realistic, however, through Centerstone and Turning Points, there are some resources out there that are willing to support them. But the unfortunate thing is, some of the individuals that are panhandling, A, they're not homeless, and B, the other side of the corner, they don't want support.
That's right.
They don't want support. But we don't want you on the streets, putting individuals in our community, public safety at risk. So we have a charge, and we're going to take and make sure we do what we need to do, sir and madam, to strengthen our ordinance. And then I think from the MSO, the Pembroke Police Department, the Bradenton Police Department, that we need a strategic way to enforce it, and kind of make some things and make sure they understand that we're not going to stand for it. That's me.
Yep.
I have Mickey. Do you have--
No, no.
Okay.
My button should be off. Sorry.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, Robin, or Vicki, can you repeat the motion that I made? I might need to amend it.
It was made to have the county attorney look in two ways to be able to enforce this terrible issue that we are having.
Okay. I would like to amend that motion, please. I would like to amend it to say, have the county attorney's office look at other counties in the state of Florida, at ordinances they might have regarding this situation. Obviously, that's the motion at this point, and I'll tell you if I can go ahead and move past that. I was also, this afternoon, going to have our administrator add that on the agenda for the Council of Governments. I think that is something that-- It's already done? Okay. I didn't know that. It is a discussion that needs to be had with Palmetto and the city of Bradenton and the islands, and I do think at that Council of Governments meeting, it would behoove us to ask someone from the sheriff's department and the Bradenton Police Department and Palmetto to also be there. You know, just to be able to have, you know, hear from them as to what their thoughts are on the subject as well.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. The second round needs to agree before we discuss--
We know that. Just haven't gotten, I haven't stopped you.
I have to, like--
Agree with the amended--
I didn't make the--
I was unfinished, though.
Thank you, Reggie.
You have to do the Robert--
That is the motion that I'm going to make at this point, because I don't want to say it has to come back for Mickey before we have the Council of Governments meeting. That's going to be impossible for the county attorney's office to be able to do that. But I do want to look at other counties, not just Sarasota, but other counties in the state of Florida. I do know that other counties have addressed this issue, that are in the same boat. And the rest of that, I want to say on that, is that if, in fact, our county attorney's office comes back, as I've kind of heard--
Total order.
--so far, that it's almost near impossible to be able to enforce it, then this board needs to go to the state and say, "Excuse us. We have a problem here. The state has a problem. We need to look at this." But that'll be down the road, so.
As a second round, second amendment.
Good with it? Okay.
May I say something on the motion? I would be happy if you, that we have heard from our attorney that it's going to be very hard without some type of feedback on, a study on the outs, on the problems that are happening because of panhandling. I would like that to be done at the same time. Other words, the attorney can be looking at the other counties, but I'd also like us to be getting on the study, so that if we have to take it to court, we have ammunition.
Are you amending the motion?
I'm asking, no, I can't amend the motion. I have to ask you, amender--
You can. All right, I amend the motion to also include a study being done. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Mickey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few points of clarification, with or without the amendment to the motion regarding other communities. My office will, as a matter of course, examine what other communities are doing, with or without instruction in the motion. But I want to be, I need to understand, is it, is it the board's instruction for my office to undertake a secondary effect study? Because I don't know that we're equipped to do that.
No, I just, it would be the responsibility of staff, whichever staff is best able to do that. If it's your staff, yes. If it's Sherry's staff, them.
The sheriff. Who wants it?
I think we don't have to go far. If we reach out to the sheriff's office and get information from them, and Bradenton Police Department and Pembroke Police Department, this is a government, this is a Council of Government thing right here, in my opinion.
We'll work with the administration.
Okay.
We get the assignment. We hear you.
Sherry?
Yes, I was going to just mention the same. We'll be in attendance at the Council of Governments meeting, and then we'll be prepared to work with the county attorney's office for whatever our role is for the board. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Servia?
Yes, thank you. And as we all discussed, Council of Governments, it's a place for it, and it was already added to the agenda yesterday.
Step ahead.
I just want to point out a couple of things as we close this topic. Think about the marketers that are out there spinning the subway signs, and you see those all over the place, and they really aren't problematic, because they stand on the sidewalk. So I think the difference between the panhandling and the marketers is that when they leave the sidewalk and approach the car, that's really, seems to be the biggest problem. I, I, look, I've been a bureaucrat more of my life than I've been in the private sector, so I understand government has big wheels that turn slowly. But adding a study to this motion, I just feel it's going to drag it out. And I really, I really want us to step out and do something. I have great respect for the law, and I want everything we do to be within the law. But sometimes, you have to weigh the risks and the benefits, and sometimes you just got to take a step out there and do something, so that we can get going on this. I don't want to be talking about this in January. So I do have a little bit of concern with the motion that just says, "And we're going to study it," with no parameter on the time, or what that means, or who's going to do it, those types of things. I've done a lot of research on this matter, and I've found communities that do PR campaigns, and we've done that here before. Remember Bob Turner and Turning Points had the business cards that you hand out if you need a meal, if you need shelter, if you need clothing--
211.
Here's, call 211.
211.
Or use this card for a free meal. That was somewhat effective. It has kind of dissipated. But there are communities that post signs, like our speed limit signs, with a logo that says, "Text here to really help the homeless with your donation. Don't give on the street. Your spare change is not making real change." You know, something catchy like that. We need an education effort to teach the public that what is really going to help the people, and I want to help the people who want help. Don't misunderstand me, anybody out there who wants help, and I talk to a lot of them, but some of them don't want help. And even when Centerstone goes out and says, "What can we do for you? You're out here in the 100-degree weather. What do you need?" And they say, "I don't need anything." And we live in a free country where you have to say, "Okay. Have a good day." So, yeah, there are things we can do. The PR campaign, the physical environment. You know, we could change the physical environment of our rights of ways. We could put up bollards at certain intersections to prevent the interaction between pedestrians and the roadway. And, you know, that's a discussion that we could have. I know it takes money, and we got to discuss if it's worth it or not. Permits. There are communities that require a permit to be a panhandler. You can wear a vest, or panhandling, selling limes in the street in Miami, which I use that example a lot, because you see it all the time, collecting money for the fire departments, fill the boot. All of those would require a permit. That's something else I think we should consider.
Good idea.
So I really look forward to us discussing this at the Council of Governments meeting. I invite you all to come, who have a concern about it. But I really hope that we take action. I don't want to talk about it for too long. We need to do something.
I have a question.
Well, we are there.
Commissioner Whitman?
Number four. In the meantime, we are, you're in charge of the Public Safety Council. When you get all the law enforcement together, you could bring this up sooner than later. I'm almost positive, when I was mayor out in the island, I had entered local agreements with the sheriff and all the cities to be able to cross jurisdictional... So I think that we already have that. I don't agree with the motion either. I think a study, to me, is a waste of time. Nobody up here understands what we're supposed to be doing with this study. I could tell by everybody's face, we're doing a study for what? I mean, we already know there's a problem. I like Misty's idea about permits to panhandle. And of course, then if they apply for a permit, you can't deny them for doing what they're going to do, but then we have laws to enforce. I just think we're going to be kicking the can. I think we need a media blitz, like we need our media department needs to be on our governmental channel, but unfortunately, if you don't have a lot of money, you don't watch it because you can't... Unless you've got a high-definition cable box, you can't watch it. But you can put it on Bay News Nine and other things, a public safety announcement, you know, something like that. But I think we can do other things. I don't agree with this study. I think... I agree with Betsy, it's just something kicking it down the road. I think the Public Safety Council and the Council of Governments, we need to start somewhere and get a plan. I also... I'm telling you, the guy that somebody just said with no legs, that guy's probably legit, you know? And I've actually taken care of people at Turning Points that actually had surgery and went back to the woods, and they really did go back to the woods.
That is true.
Came back to get their stitches out. So it's... There are people that are legit. But these guys on 75th Street, I see them, I just look the other way, I don't even look at them, keep my windows rolled up, and it's terrible, I agree. But I don't believe in a study. I believe our law enforcement should be helping us in the cities, and let's just try to enforce the laws that we have. And I don't think... If you want everybody to look to see if there's another ordinance that it's working somewhere, then fine. But I don't agree with the study.
You don't want to study?
Okay. And I think the purpose of the study was because of what the county attorney said. He said, because we cannot just enforce stopping panhandling, because it's a First Amendment right, the purpose of the study was to look at the secondary impacts, what's really happening. I don't think it is... We're not commissioning a study, but we're working with our legal partners to find out what are... What's been reported? What is the record? What are people doing? How do we enforce stopping that aggressive action? It can't just be panhandling. I think that was the comment, as I heard it from the county attorney. I agree, we shouldn't have a big study, but we're going to have to, to be able to put more teeth in this ordinance, we're going to have to prohibit specific activity. And it's that specific activity that we need documentation to support our ordinance, that it's occurring and that we can do that. So that's what I heard from the county attorney. If everyone is in agreement that we need that, then I don't have any problem with the motion, as it's stated. If that's what the study is. You're right. Words, "the study," what the heck does that mean? I mean, that's going to be pretty bureaucratically vague for putting things off.
Bureaucratically.
So... But I believe, and maybe I could get confirmation from the county attorney, we're not talking about commissioning a study, we're talking about looking into what are the... Beyond the fact of somebody standing on the corner, the definition of panhandling, what are the other secondary impacts that these folks are causing, and can we prohibit those? Is that what I'm hearing from the county attorney?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, as I sit here right now, I don't know what the quote "study" is going to look like.
You know what? It's going away. Don't worry about it.
But again, I hold up this county's adult entertainment ordinance as a classic example. It was challenged in the local courts, it was challenged in the federal, in the middle district of Florida, federal district court, it went to the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, and ultimately to the U.S. Supreme Court and back, okay? And it is a defensible ordinance that has been upheld by the highest court in the land. And one of the reasons is that we had one heck of a study to back up the ordinance regarding the secondary effects of adult entertainment establishments, okay? This is a very similar kind of thing, where you are regulating conduct that is otherwise protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. And so in that instance, yes, it was time-consuming. I dare say it was a decade to include going to the United States Supreme Court and finally coming back with an approved ordinance. Yes. Oh, it was a tortured trail.
And they're still stripping.
It was a tortured trail.
Sorry.
Now, well, actually, that's not true. The local adult entertainment establishments right now are under an injunction order from a local circuit judge and have recently been held in contempt of court. And so we're headed back to court to see if somebody might be going to jail. So, again, I'll offer you that as a backdrop when we're talking about conduct that the courts say is otherwise protected by the First Amendment.
Wow. Okay, I'm not willing to wait a decade for a study. And I just want...
I want to say it.
I'm sorry.
I said the court process took a decade.
If I may. I'm not willing to go months and months and months having to look into this and, you know, talk about it. The only reason I put the study in the motion was because Priscilla had... I'm sorry, Commissioner Trace had mentioned it. I thought, you know what, the main thing is to get the motion approved, to get the county attorney's office looking at other counties and what they're managing to do and what their results have been.
And I mentioned it because our staff said they needed it.
Right, I understand.
I'm fine, take it off.
So, here's the thing. The main thing for this board is that in the council of governments meeting on July 30th, we're going to have the other local governments attending. Hopefully, we will have Palmetto, the Bradenton City Police, as well as some of our islands, so that this board and the other entities can have a good, in-depth conversation about this issue. So I'm going to, again, modify the motion. Robin, can you... It's getting ridiculously difficult here. The main thing is to address this issue for our citizens as soon as possible. So Robin, can you please mention or let me know what you have down as the motion again?
Motion is to have the county attorney look in two ways to be able to enforce this terrible issue that we are having.
Wow.
To have the county attorney look at other counties in the state of Florida and the ordinance that they may have regarding this situation, and for a study to be done.
Okay. I'm going to amend that motion to exclude the study, and I'll tell you why after I amend this motion. To exclude the study and also put a time period of 60 days on this to come back to the board. Do I need to repeat that motion?
I second that because we need teeth, we need momentum.
Do I... Exact... Thank you. Do I need to... Robin, do you have that, or do I need to just go through the whole spiel?
It's not clear. You keep saying terrible issue. Tell them what it is. I think in the motion for future boards, they need to know what the motion was. You just said this terrible issue, and so...
Panhandling and the public safety concerns are panhandling.
Okay. Modify it accordingly. Go ahead, Robin.
The entire motion?
Yes, ma'am. I can't keep up.
Motion to have the county attorney look in two ways to be able to enforce this terrible issue that we are having.
Okay, see what you mean.
To have the county attorney look at other counties in the state of Florida and the ordinance that they may have regarding this situation, and to exclude the study and also for a period of 60 days to come back to the board.
Yes, ma'am. And also, Robin, if you could, I'm going to amend terrible situation and put in panhandling, please.
Put in panhandling?
Yes, put in the reason that the panhandling.
And take out the terrible word.
Yeah, take out the terrible. I didn't realize that's what I had said.
Bad adjective.
Yeah. We don't need any adjectives. They might get better as time goes along, who knows? You okay with that, Robin?
Yes.
I just want to make sure. Now, the reason I'm taking out the study is because I'm hearing commissioners up here, some like the study, some don't. The bottom line is, after the council of governments meeting, after the county attorney has time to go through and look at other counties and what they're doing and not doing, and it comes back to this board, at that time, you know, we can talk more in-depth about whether or not a study of some sort needs to be done, with us being able to make, hopefully, some changes in the way that we're handling things temporarily. So I think that's probably the quickest way to hopefully get it back to this board with some action that can be taken. So that's not in the motion, by the way. So would you repeat the motion, Robin, one more time? Hopefully, everybody will approve this time.
A motion to have the county attorney look in two ways to be able to enforce this issue that we are having. To have the county attorney look at other counties in the state of Florida and the ordinance that they may have regarding this situation. To exclude the study and also for a time period of 60 days to come back to the board and including panhandling.
The whole thing is...
Okay, fine.
Okay.
You know what? I think we need to leave it there and just move forward because we're getting later and later on this.
No, we need to change it.
Okay, Robin, I hate to do it, but I'm hearing... This is very hard to get seven people to agree to anything.
Commissioner Trace?
As soon as she gets the message, I'm calling the question.
Thank you.
She's been waiting, he's like been trying to butt in.
Robin, where you have other issues, can you take that out and put in panhandling, please?
That's all you have to do, at the very beginning of this issue.
Regarding terrible issue?
Yeah, just put panhandling.
Yes. No longer terrible issue, it's called panhandling.
Panhandling.
Panhandling is the terrible issue.
Okay.
I'm giving up on this board.
But I was before.
I'm not changing it again. It either passes or it doesn't.
No, Mr. Chair, I understand why Commissioner Trace called the question, but respectfully, I was before her on the board. And I love her, and I understand why. I have a question. Do we have a permit process when the firefighters go up? When the firefighters are out on the road, do we have a permit process?
Used to, years ago, but not anymore.
So that may be a start for us to potentially enhance the enforcement capability and the criteria for the permit process, and that's where we can start kind of narrowing it down. But again, that'll be discussed at the... Yeah, she's going to call it.
Not him going to call it. Yes, I am.
Need to, because we're ready to vote.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Calling the question or the actual motion?
Well, I never got a second for calling the question.
We're going to vote now.
So I think we can just go ahead and vote on the motion. So as I said, we got a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Bellamy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
I'm exhausted, I need to go home now.
Okay, now we're going to move on to our ten o'clock time, certain at 10:42. I think this is Commissioner Trace's...
Yes, this is where the scenic river is coming back. I've asked Kate to present this. I would like to say that Ed Helvingston from the county attorney's office in Hillsborough is here, Forrest Turberville, Director of Conservation and Environmental Lands, Dexter Barge, Assistant County Administrator of Compliance Communities and Conservation, and Ed Sherwood, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Estuary are here, if there are questions. But this was a request by Hillsborough County to deem the Little Manatee River a scenic river, and we just wanted to make sure there was... What the effects on Manatee County, and Kate has done that and will present that.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before ACA Zamboni begins, I just want to be clear that the Office of the County Attorney is decidedly neutral on this subject. We are not recommending for, we are not recommending against. We have simply been instructed to do research on the matter and to craft a proposed resolution, and Kate is prepared to talk about that.
Good morning again. Kate Zamboni with the county attorney's office. As Commissioner Trace mentioned, she asked for my assistance in presenting resolution number R-19-084 for the commission's consideration. This resolution would be a formal expression of support of federal legislation to designate the Little Manatee River as a component or potential component of this Wild and Scenic River system. Just a little background, the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act is a federal law that protects and preserves rivers that possess outstandingly remarkable values, and because we mentioned adjectives before, I'm very aware that that statute uses an adverb where an adjective should be used, so outstandingly remarkable values, otherwise known as ORVs, in a free-flowing condition. And there's a couple of things in the act I just want to explain a little bit more. As discussed in more detail in the county attorney office's opinion memorandum, when Congress initiates the designation of a river, the legislation can either designate an eligible river outright or authorize a river for study to determine its eligibility. And that's why the resolution before you uses the words "component" or "potential component." I'm not really sure which way Congressman Buchanan plans to move forward with the legislation, so it would be supportive either way. The other thing I wanted to address is the definition of free-flowing. It is defined by the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act to mean existing or flowing in a natural condition without impoundment, diversion, straightening, riprapping, or other modification. But there is an important proviso. The definition in the statute provides that the existence of low dams, diversion works, or other minor structures at the time a river is proposed for inclusion in the system shall not automatically bar its consideration. And so even if there is some existing impoundment, that may not be a bar to the Little Manatee River's eligibility. And finally, while the resolution refers to the Little Manatee River and appropriate tributaries, my understanding is that Congressman Buchanan's legislation would not include the Little Manatee South Fork Tributary. That is a major tributary that runs through mostly Manatee County. It's approximately 19 miles long. Thus, as proposed, the designation would include just a very small portion of the main stem of the Little Manatee River that traverses through Manatee County. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, just I want to make sure I understand what you just said. So this, the Wild and Scenic, would be limited to the free-flowing main stem of the Little Manatee River?
There may be tributaries in Hillsborough County that are included, but my understanding is that the portion of the Little Manatee River that's located in Manatee County would not include that very big tributary known as the South Fork.
Is that going to be in the ordinance specifically?
Well, it wouldn't be the ordinance, it's just the resolution.
A resolution, okay.
It's not that detailed, but the details of what is being proposed for designation would be contained in the federal legislation supported by Congressman Buchanan.
And the reason, I guess, I'm saying that is I love the thought of having the Little Manatee River doing this, but my concern are, you know, there are property owners that have property, you know, on some of this. So that's why I was asking. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Benak?
Yeah, I had similar concerns that I brought up before, and I still have similar concerns. I mean, this program, its application, is where I don't understand what the effects will be on property owners, and I don't...
Yeah.
And I did contact FPNL and said, are you aware? Because it's my understanding that Lake Parish is created by some sort of impoundment of the Little Manatee River. That's what has created Lake Parish, which is used as the cooling pond for FPNL's, you know, plant. So I question whether or not it's eligible under the language that's in here. I don't know how that lake was created, honestly. It was done a long time ago. Maybe somebody up here can tell me how Lake Parish was created. Used to be a great place to fish, can't fish there anymore because of security reasons, is my understanding. But obviously, this act was put in place to prevent that from happening. So I... We already have it happened, so I don't know the applicability of that situation here. I do think that we have not been told what the goals are of this request. Yes, we can request the federal government to do something. That kind of scares me, quite frankly.
That's just a request.
We're requesting the federal government. We don't know what effect it will have on Manatee County property owners. I've not been told. I was in a similar situation, I relayed this information before when I worked for Manatee County staff, and we were requested to designate the upper reaches of the Manatee River as a Wild and Scenic River. And I remember working with the county commission at that time, representatives, and saying, and their question was the same, well, what will that mean? Well, you do the management plan afterwards. You do the designation, and then you do a management plan. Well, what do we tell the property owners what the effect is? Well, that'll be figured out after. What if the effect is, as it has been in Sarasota County, impacts on setbacks? And I know the federal government doesn't have that charge, but we're asked to do a management plan. What is the cost of doing this management plan? There's a requirement to have a complete survey done of the river boundaries. Ooh, that's a pretty expensive cost, I would imagine. Who bears that cost? There's so many questions. I, believe me, I'm a kayaker, I love the idea of Wild and Scenic, you know, I'd love to see Campbell Creek, quite frankly. I've kayaked that area, and it's beautiful, and, but I know that it would have significant impacts to property owners. We talk about there only being a couple of property owners here, but it also says the Little South Fork, however it is, may not be, doesn't say it won't be included. It says it may not be. Well, do those property owners get notice? I mean, we have to understand what the implications are of asking this, and I'm not sure I understand it. And I, I think it's great that Hillsborough County is teaming up with this, and I've been to the Little Manatee River State Park, fabulous location, I have canoed, didn't kayak that, I canoed it, that portion of the river. There's just, to me, this is such an open-ended request, that I have big concerns at this time, and I haven't been able to get any questions answered other than, I don't really understand that since the federal government doesn't own land, it doesn't apply. I don't get that statement at all, but that's in your, maybe you can explain what that means.
I'm gonna do my best to answer a number of your questions, except I remembered them. So let me first address any existing impoundments on the river. It's not my call or your call whether the Little Manatee River is eligible for inclusion with or without an existing, with the existing impoundment. So that's up to Congress, or if it's a study river, it'll likely be the Department of the Interior that makes that decision. If it is found to be eligible notwithstanding an existing impoundment, that impoundment is essentially grandfathered, it will not be removed. The river is accepted into the system in its current state. Once included in the Wild and Scenic River system, however, other federally, what's called any kind of federally assisted, impoundments would be prohibited. So that would include hydroelectric dams that are licensed by FERC, or possibly even other kind of riprapping that would require Core 404 permit. So those types of things would, would be precluded once it is in the system. In terms of the study that you referenced, there would be a river management study or comprehensive river management plan authorized once it's included. That's the federal government's cost. Usually the way those work is the federal agency, like the National Park Service, is the lead, but they tend to work with the local interest stakeholders, but they would fund the study. Now, the effect on the landholders, the reason why that's very difficult to answer is because only to the extent there's federal property would that study mandate changes to the way that land is managed. If it is not federal property, and to the extent the Little Manatee traverses through Manatee County, there is no federal property, it's privately held, all they could do is make recommendations, and ultimately, this board would retain authority about whether or not to adopt changes to setback requirements or other zoning. So this board would retain complete control and authority over those types of changes that could affect the landholders. So if you don't feel comfortable with that possibility, you know, just know that this board would retain that authority. And I hope that answered your question about what does it mean if it's not federal property. So if the federal government owns the adjacent property, then that river management plan, you know, would basically mandate, okay, these are the changes, the way that land's gonna be managed.
Okay. If I could just dialogue with her for a sec, and thank you, and I do understand that, but my presumption, since it was done for the Rakiva River, it was done for the Maiaa River in Sarasota, and they spent many hours debating a management plan, that that is, there is some intent to do that in this, in this request. Now, I'm not asking you, that's a policy question, and I would like to hear from the folks that are advocating for this, what is their goal?
Yes.
What are their goals, what are we trying to achieve here? Because that has not been adequately explained to me at this time. So I want to make it clear that I wasn't asking you that, I was asking the folks.
Right, I understand. And I did one, I did research the Maiaa, because I heard that come up a lot, and I'll just caution you, I don't think the Maiaa River is part of the national Wild and Scenic River system. I think there's a Florida component, and that was designated through a Florida statute. So the process that was used for the Maiaa River may not be analogous to what's being proposed for the Little Manatee River. But if there's somebody here that wants to answer your question about what is the goal of the designation, I'll turn it over to them.
And I also want clarity that this was, and I asked this in my briefing, that this was not a proposal by Vern Buchanan, this was a proposal by Manatee County, or by Hillsborough County requesting our support, and that Congressman Buchanan would carry this forward. It was not something that was on his agenda, per se, it was our agenda, and we're asking for his help. It sounds different every time I hear it, so I just, I'd like some clarity on that.
You brought some good comments.
Do you have an expert that will hopefully answer those?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Palmer and Ms. Correa. I'm Ed Sherwood, I'm the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program. I represent one of twenty-eight national estuary programs throughout the nation designated by Congress as estuaries of national significance. There's actually two other ones just south of us, Sarasota Bay Estuary Program, Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program. This was brought to my Board's attention on May seventeenth at our Policy Board meeting, where Commissioner White is, been a proponent of designating the Little Manatee River as a Wild and Scenic River through the national designation. In order to get that support, we recognize that we need to work with multiple municipalities because the river flows through many local jurisdictions. So that's part of our reason for bringing this to the Board's attention today, and we very much appreciate Commissioner Trace bringing this to Manatee County's boards for your consideration. So I would say, you know, the goal of this, this program is to elevate our status as a region in order to protect and restore some of the natural resources that we hold valuable and true to the very community that we live in. So we have done previous studies back in 2014 that have recognized that a healthy Tampa Bay contributes substantially to the local economy, that one in five jobs are directly tied to the bay remaining healthy, and that equates about twenty-two billion in annual economic return to the region. So in that spirit, I think supporting an action that would continue to protect and restore some of these cherished places in the state of Florida would be something that the region wanted to embrace, and I think our Policy Board is supportive of that action, and that's why I'm speaking to you today, and pledge our program's support to bringing about consensus in the community around this issue, if that's the desire of this community. And I think, you know, I'll leave it at that, but that's basically the core goal of this designation.
Any other?
Well, I appreciate everything, I've sat on the Estuary Board of Sarasota, I've never sat on Charlotte, but I've sat on Sarasota and Tampa Bay Policy Boards, actually served three times on the Policy Board in Sarasota. Everything you say is incredible, I agree, that our water quality is the most important thing that we have in the state of Florida, you know, and, and used to be, you'd say those words, and they didn't mean much, but everybody knows what that means today. I mean, we're talking about big problems that we have in this state. I'm still unclear what exactly this designation would do to move that needle. Do we have a threat of another impoundment that is, that is causing the need for this, or maybe somebody has done an analysis of what the threats are out there to the Little Manatee River that I'm not aware of? I'm just trying to seek information in how that affects property owners, because I have seen application in Michigan. My brother has property on a Wild and Scenic River in Michigan, I know some of the application there. Again, the Maiaa, whether it was state or federal, there were certainly a lot of discussions by property owners. So I agree with everything that you said, but quite frankly, did not answer my question, why it is necessary to do this at this time for the Little Manatee River, and how would that will move the needle, like you said.
Yeah, I think it brings our community together in determining a plan that will better manage that system, that is agreeable to our community. So that is the driver of the plan. There are restoration plans within the Hillsborough County portion of the Little Manatee River already in place, and I think, you know, solidifying that total vision of what we want the river to be and remain to be in the future, I think that's what this drives.
So you think that the answers will be in the management plan?
That, that would be the next step.
Thank you.
Well, I was told that the reason is they can get more federal dollars for that estuary if it was designated a scenic river. So it's, they receive more federal monies. But Vern would not look at it unless both counties agreed to it, that's what I was told.
I don't blame them.
Right now, there's only a little bit less than fifty miles designated as the twenty-five-thousand-plus miles in the state of Florida as Wild and Scenic Rivers, so it definitely help in that respect in terms of elevating the status of that river and potentially securing additional funds for its continued protection.
Thank you.
You're on the board.
Okay, I'm actually on the board. The building of Lake Parish, they actually pump in, they can pump into and out of Lake Parish, out of the Little Manatee River, that's kind of the land, and it's not actually connected to the Little Manatee River, but they do have rights and permits by SWIFTMUD to pump in if they need to. I don't think they've ever pumped out, or they haven't in a lot of years, but they built this five-thousand-acre lake, and they are able to pump in and out. And that was my number-one question when they came to me, was, I know Florida Power and Light has a discharge, in-charge discharge there, and it cannot be affected. And if it takes the South Fork out of it, it's really, there's very little Little Manatee River, except for the South Fork in Manatee County. I think there's only four property owners there, but that was my number-one concern, too, is, you know, how does it affect our group of people? And from what I understand, the Florida Power and Light would not be affected whatsoever by this, because they're grandfathered in, and they've been there since probably seventy-two.
Make that nineteen seventy-eight, roughly nineteen seventy-eight. Mr. Durstemberger has been kind enough to send me two aerials, one from nineteen seventy-three and one from nineteen seventy-eight depicting no lake, and seventy-eight depicting a huge lake. So sometime between seventy-three and seventy-eight is when FPL constructed that lake.
They started about seven, they started in seventy-two, though, trust me, I was there, like I said, right across the street, so.
Okay, Commissioner Whitmore?
Well, I understand, I'm, Betsy brought up some great questions, but I'm on the Sarasota Bay Estuary Policy Board, and we do want free-flowing waterways. And if there's any way to maintain it throughout the years, this is to get, be able to get federal funds, because counties can't do it. And to keep our, to keep our, to try to improve our water quality even better, we need to keep it all open. I keep thinking about, like, what they did in the Everglades, where they dammed everything off, this would prevent that, this would never happen. So I'm conflicted, I probably am gonna support it, I don't know if I'll regret it in the future, but I, I'm all for keeping the rivers open and free-flowing instead of the problems that we've seen in the middle of the state. And not saying that we would, but future boards, future governments could in the future, so I don't know, I'm probably gonna support it. But you asked really good questions, I've had, I delayed it last time because of your comments, and we're really not getting the answers that we, that you're asking, because I don't think people here can answer them, I don't know, and if nobody's, seems like nobody's stepping up. But Hillsborough County supported it, correct?
I think they are waiting to see what the Manatee County Commission does, and there's a representative here from Commissioner White's office.
I would like to hear from Hillsborough, why aren't you doing it first, and we can tail on, you're bigger. Just asking.
Oh, good morning, Forrest Turberville, Hillsborough County, Director of Conservation and Environmental Lands. In fact, a map was just passed out to you, I hope this is helpful. It does show all the conservation lands within the Little Manatee watershed, that includes almost eighteen thousand acres within Hillsborough County, and about six thousand acres within Manatee County. With regard to the South Fork, certainly, you could put language in the resolution that could exclude the South Fork from, from the resolution, if that is the desire of the Board. You can see from the map, and this would just be immediately north of the large lake area, there's just a very small portion of the Little Manatee River that actually traverses Manatee County. Much of the property within that little wedge, if you will, is already publicly owned, so we're talking about a very, very small piece of property within Manatee County. So again, just looking for your support on this, a majority of the river is within Hillsborough County, and hopefully with your support, we'll be taking it to our Board sometime within the next four to six weeks.
So if, if your Board doesn't support this, then it's all for naught?
Potentially, potentially.
And then if, if that happened, I, if I do support this, I would like to know the outcome of Hillsborough County, and if, and if this doesn't work out, then I would probably ask that Manatee withdraw, because it all needs to be together. So I would support it on that contingent, that we would support it now, and then see, and see what Hillsborough County Commission decides to do, and if they approve it, then it's fine. If they don't, have, come before the Board again for discussion, because it'll be all for naught, if we're not all together.
I think that's very fair.
Okay.
Commissioner Benak?
Thank you for this map, I think it is helpful. I just wanna, I would ask if you could put this on the overhead screen so that the public could see this map?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, so the area of the Little Manatee River that extends into Manatee County, it looks like, I'm talking about the blue line, I just want to make sure, blue line, it goes through the yellow property, which is conservation lands, makes sense, that's great, and then it hooks around and comes back up to the Manatee, Hillsborough, Manatee County line. So we're talking about the extent of that blue line within the Manatee County that would be included in this?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and staff has done research, and there are only, how many property owners that are affected, potentially, by whatever regulations that might come out, if any?
Less than half a dozen, I think it's in my memorandum, exactly how many, I think there's three, oh, four.
I think there's four.
Okay, but they've not received any notification of this action?
Not that I'm aware of.
And it looks like Hillsborough County has almost all of the adjacent lands, adjacent to the free-flowing river, if I might, in public lands, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Amazing.
Yeah, it is amazing.
Well, I strongly support the acquisition of lands for protection.
Yeah.
I strongly support that, but I strongly support property rights, but that's why I strongly support, if you buy them, that's good.
Absolutely.
Okay. Again, I just, I'm a little concerned about the cart before the horse, but I understand that's kind of how the process works. I just, so you, you're not looking at creating a management plan, per se, in Hillsborough County, or are you looking at create a management plan?
Well, in terms of management plans, we actually have management plans for all the properties that you see along the river within Hillsborough County. Through the Environmental Lands Program, which has now crazily been in existence for thirty-one years within Hillsborough County, we've acquired over sixty-four thousand acres, and whenever we acquire a piece of property, we are required by our own county ordinance, as well as in some cases, if we partner with the state, SCT program, the CAR program, we are required to, within twelve months, actually create a management plan for each one of our ELAP sites. So this entire stretch of the river, which, again, is almost eighteen thousand acres, kind of divvied up into individual purchases, each purchase has its own management plan, regardless of whether it's five thousand acres or a thousand acres.
Well, I guess, and, you know, I'm, I would like to know the implication to our county staff, environmental land staff, whether or not they would be, in fact, compelled to take on creating a management plan in this area as well. And I don't know if our, our county staff has been approached with that question as part of this overall issue, or not.
No.
And I'm looking at the county administrator or the director of Natural Resources.
No, there has not been a request through, through my office, and I don't believe through Charlie's, either.
And I don't believe the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act would mandate that.
I understand that, I understand there's not a mandate. The question I'm trying to get at is, what's the goal here?
Why do it?
You know, and I think the only goal I've heard, that I understand, is that by controlling this as a Wild and Scenic River, we have some control, but we'd also have access to some funding that we haven't had. But we're, again, and I understand completely, that we have the ability to do the controls through zoning, the federal government doesn't, so the presumption is that we're not going to do anything other than join in this application to the federal government, and we're not gonna do anything more past that. Is that what I'm hearing?
If I could, I think from Commissioner White's point of view, he's not really looking at this as a regulatory tool, so to speak, he's looking for additional federal funds at some point in the future, that we can combine with our county ELAP funds to support the ELAP program and have additional acquisitions within the watershed moving forward. So by doing that, it stretches our ELAP dollars that much further.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, just a couple of questions here. Did, did someone?
Yeah, just a couple of questions here. Did, did someone from your, from Hillsborough say, have you, you've had this discussion with Congressman Buchanan?
Commissioner White's office has, yes.
And so basically, before he'll carry it to DC, he wants us and Hillsborough to do this together? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Mr. Helviston is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Helviston, I'm Assistant County Attorney for Hillsborough County. My understanding of the discussion with Congressman Buchanan is that he, his request at a resolution, in order to proceed with this, he wants a resolution from both boards, and both resolutions are to be unanimous. That is the direction that was apparently given.
Okay, well, I, okay, that changes everything. Unanimous, from both boards, is that correct?
I am being told secondhand that that was the request from Congressman Buchanan to Commissioner White. Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately for this commissioner, and I think several others, you know, we, this is our first meeting. We just came back from recess, really, yesterday. So I have just now sent, or a few minutes ago, sent a text message to Congressman Buchanan to have a conversation on this, because I don't think anyone from this board has had a conversation with Congressman Buchanan. And the other thing is, I am very concerned, and I know Commissioner Benak mentioned this, the property owners in Manatee County, they need to have a say, and they need to know about this before it's done. Even though perhaps it might not negatively affect them, it's still, they should have knowledge of it. So I personally, for a unanimous decision, I can tell you I'm not ready to vote for this today. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm saying I just need a little more information, and we need to, I think, talk to our property owners to make sure they're aware. So perhaps we could defer it, you know, a month, just so we can do all that, and then have it come back again. Because, I'll tell you something else I'm concerned about, that I'd like to look into. I know that there's many bodies of water that would probably be capable of doing the same thing, and they've chosen not to do it in other counties, and I'm curious as to why. And these are just questions that I have. You know, I want to make sure this is something that's advantageous for not just Hillsborough, for funding, but also for Manatee County, and our property owners that are involved. And, you know, if we could just defer it for a while, you know, I could probably get some answers to things, you know, and feel better about voting for it.
Is that a motion you're making, Ms.?
Oh, God, do I have to make the motion?
You did.
Okay, yes, that's a motion.
Second. For 30 days, for a month, correct?
For 30 days, yes.
30 days. Okay.
Could you please clarify the motion? I'm sorry.
The motion is to defer this topic for 30 days, so that it gives us a chance to do some research with the property owners involved, and also just to be able to look into this more thoroughly.
Madam Chair, or Mr. Chairman and Ms. Ball, may I recommend an amendment?
You know what, why don't you make the motion, okay? Because I'm not going to battle this board on that again.
So I just, I think it's very important that we also notify the property owners in writing that are affected by this. That's all. May not be required by law, but I think it's the right thing to do. So that's the only thing I want to add.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Trace.
I was just going to say, on the resolution, I think we should go ahead and withdraw the South Fork anyway. That takes care of almost all of our residents, and it's not, does not need to be part of this. So let's make sure, when we do a resolution, whenever it comes back, the South Fork is removed from it, which basically puts us down to four landowners, one of them, three of them are brothers, and Florida Power and Light.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Cousins, maybe. Please don't ask me to amend my.
Yeah, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not trying to kill this per se. I think the question, as has been stated, is, you know, what exactly does this mean? I will read you the paragraph in the resolution that I do have concern about. It says, whereas designation of the Little Manatee River as a component of the Wild and Scenic River system will promote public as well as federal, state, and local government participation in developing additional protections, including protection of scenic, recreational wildlife and habitat, cultural and water quality, and quantity values, and other benefits, while also recognizing the potential for appropriate use and development. To me, that language is so broad, that we're basically, by adopting this, be giving direction to staff and, and maybe other boards, that we're looking for additional regulation. And I've heard that's not the goal. So is there some way to maybe change that language to clarify that we're not looking for additional regulation? What the intent of this is, is protection of land. I don't have a problem with that. But we need to be more clear in what that would be, so that there isn't an idea that we're trying to create, you know, we just need to be clear what it is, and not just have this broad language. And I know, you're an attorney, you guys can figure that stuff out.
Again, Commissioner, it is absolutely at the discretion of this board, whether any additional regulation occurs or not, under the statutes.
Well, and maybe that's, maybe we need to focus on, on providing some sort of intent language in here, that we do not intend to add any additional regulation at this time. I don't, I don't know how to do that, but like I said, you guys are attorneys, you can figure that stuff out. We've got 30 days.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second. We're now going to open it up for public comment. The day may come when you want to regulate setbacks in this particular area, you know, so I would be careful about that.
Thank you.
I have one card from a Lindsey Cross, if she's available. Please come down, you have three minutes. Thank you for waiting.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Lindsey Cross, the Government Relations Director with the Florida Conservation Voters. And I appreciate you having this thoughtful discussion on designation, or consideration of designation of the Little Manatee River as a Wild and Scenic River. I think this is a very exciting opportunity, and Mr. Sherwood alluded to the fact that there are very few rivers within our state and within our nation that have this designation. Federally, only a quarter of 1% of our rivers have that, and in the state, only 1/5 of 1%. So this would really elevate this region as understanding and recognizing the importance of our natural resources and our water quality. Within Florida, we have over 25,000 river miles, and only 49.2 miles are actually designated. As a former employee for 14 years of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, I had the remarkable opportunity to explore and seek ways to protect and restore Tampa Bay, its tributaries and the surrounding lands. And I can tell you that Little Manatee River is one of the most spectacular places that we have, and I've spent countless hours paddling these rivers. And my best friend has a house on the property right near the state park. So it's, I think, something that we need to cherish. We do know that having healthy ecosystem is an economic driver of our region. It increases property values. We know that people continue to move to this region because of our thriving economy and our natural environment. And I think this would help to set Manatee and Hillsborough County, really elevate them as leaders in protection of our natural areas. Designating this portion of the Little Manatee River as a Wild and Scenic River, and developing a management plan, will help to ensure its long-term protection. We have had the success we have in the Tampa Bay area because of partnerships around the bay. We've seen a remarkable recovery of Tampa Bay from a poster child of pollution, to one of the most outstanding estuaries, and a worldwide model of partnerships, and taking those leadership positions. And we have the great fortune of living in this region now. So some of these results may not be realized in our lifetime, but it will be things that our grandchildren will thank us for. So I appreciate you listening to these comments, and hope that in 30 days, through discussions with Hillsborough County and the congressman, we're able to move forward on this, which I think is just an exciting and remarkable opportunity. And if I can help in any way to assist this process, I would be honored to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good information. Is there anybody else in the public at this point that would like to come down and talk? Sir? No. You, please, come on down.
I left my ears in Vietnam.
We can hear you good.
It's his ears that you left.
I know.
County Commissioners, general public, I would like to address.
Name.
State your name, sir.
I'm Charlie Choats.
Thank you.
From Northwest Brady. Moved there in 1932. The Manatee, they say, is a dangerous species. False. It is not. There was no manatees here when I was a kid. I spent thousands of hours commercial fishing, diving, never saw a manatee. Then I decided, when the manatee started appearing, I went out to Cortez, talked to the fishermen, and I said, when was the first manatee sighted? And here is the 1960, they couldn't say, yo, there's a manatee. What's the date? About 1965, one manatee was sighted in the falligarius. The mouth of Manatee River, place called Seven Pines, north end of Logboat Key, south Tampa Bay, near Joe's Island. Then in 1963, one was sighted at the railroad bridge of Manatee River, over the north end. The first sighting that I made was channel marker 13 in Pomisola Bay in 1977. The manatee count now, when I was growing up now, remember, there were no manatees. The manatee count, 10 years ago, the first time I started to research, was 4,000, from zero to 4,000. The count now is 6,000. This is most recent. My point is, let's stop throwing money away protecting the manatees. When we have a freeze, the manatees are going unless they can find the warm water at this power plant in Tampa Bay. So don't spend any more money protecting the manatees. We have 6,000 out there now. I think that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to come down and speak on the Hillsborough Manatee, Little Manatee watershed?
We got him.
Seeing nobody, we will close public comment. I have a motion from somebody. Who was it?
That was.
Oh, Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Servia. Would you please read that motion back for our benefit?
Motion to defer this topic for 30 days, so that it gives us a chance to do some research with the property owners involved, to be able to look into this more thoroughly, and also notify the property owners in writing that are affected by this.
Okay, there's the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
I have a comment.
I'm sorry, Betsy.
If you could. I, I just want to make sure, too, that we also hear from staff, a recommendation on this. I would like to, because I, again, potentially work for staff, and I'd like to know what that means. This is a fairly large watershed. The area of the river is small, but the watershed is large. And so maybe a little bit of research on staff's part, as to what that might mean, coming back, if the language stays exactly as is. I recognize what Mickey said, maybe we do want setbacks. I don't know. I don't want to say we don't necessarily, but I would like to know what this means to staff, if we were to adopt such a resolution.
Mr. Chair.
And I don't think they've had the opportunity to look into that.
Mr. Chair.
We'll take, we'll add ourselves to that review.
Okay, again, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Greg, do you want to say something?
Oh.
I'm, I'm in favor.
You guys got to punch that button so late.
Not me.
I've added, sir.
My question is, are we expecting to hear back from Congressman Buchanan's office?
Oh, I'm sure.
And you will bring that information back to us?
Absolutely.
All right.
I'm going to get in the middle of it.
Anybody else would like to punch their button at this point? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Okay. At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess before we open the Port Authority meeting that was scheduled only five minutes ago.
Yeah.
So we'll be back. Okay, we're back on. So at this point, we're going to open up the Port Manatee meeting, and I believe Vanessa's in charge of this.
Good, well, let's see. Still morning, all right. Good morning. We're going to open the Manatee County Port Authority meeting for July the 23rd, 2019, and it's great to see all of y'all here today. We missed y'all, and we're glad to be back from recess.
Thank you.
Or at least I am. I can't speak for others, so. Carlos.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for handling the Port Authority meeting today. We just have a few agenda items, none of which, you know, require a lot of, let's say, scrutiny from our side. We've reviewed it. Your counsel is here, and Deputy Director Dave Stanford is here, too, in case we have any additional questions. We would request that you consider, first, the consent agenda, and I think you might, of course, you called for public comment first.
I was getting ready to do that.
We're ready.
Okay. Before we go to the consent agenda, is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and speak on any issue relating to port manatee? All right, not seeing anyone. We'll close public comment.
Move we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda by Commissioner Trace, second by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is approved unanimously. Two, Carlos, you want to handle that, berth four extension?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This relates to, again, our study to expand the port's ability to handle additional ships, and this is the first step in that study to determine the feasibility of expanding and the investigation to handle the berth expansion on the north side of the port.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Move we approve berth four extension?
Second.
All right, before we vote on that, I do have a question. Carlos, how long do you think this is going to take, this study, to be done? Just out of curiosity.
So very quickly, by mid-November, as I'm being told by staff.
Okay, I just have to say that I think the price that you negotiated on this is extremely fair. I was surprised at that, so. All right, well, we have a motion by Commissioner Trace, second by Commissioner Servia, to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is approved unanimously. Barge mooring, interesting.
Thank you. Again, this is an expansion project. It's related to the ability to handle seagoing barges, water-going barges for the port. It'll be a new business opportunity that can enhance the port's capability to handle new business.
And Carlos, on that, I know it's for new business, has that, has the contract been signed with the new business on that? Just out of curiosity.
No, this would be a business where the ability to moor barges ready to be used for new business.
Right.
Creates the opportunity for these barges not to have to be brought in from miles away, but rather have the immediate capability to handle new cargo, and then that cargo that otherwise might not be able to come, having the barges at the ready at the port is immediately being able to be handled.
I know you and I had had that conversation before. That's why I was curious. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move we execute the contract between the Manatee County Port Authority and the infrastructure and industrial contractors in the amount of 210,000. Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trace, second by Commissioner Whitmore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is approved unanimously. All right, Carlos, next. Ryan Long.
Thank you. Agenda number four relates essentially to this project also. It's with Carver Maritime, one of our growing customers at the port, and they are going to be contributing to the projects or the cost of the moorings for these barges, for the construction of those moorings, and therefore, it's a partnership, and they'll probably be one of the users, although the barge system or the barge moorings and the barge capability will be open to any user at the port.
Pleasure of the board?
Just one question. How come, you know, with sublease, what's that all about? I mean, we're making this with Carver, and they've already said they intend on subleasing it immediately.
Yes.
Was there something, there must be more to that story.
Well, yes, the sublease will be to McDonough Barge, will be the actual barge company, so they're responsible for and paying us rent, and they identified a user, which is the McDonough Barge Company, that will be utilizing the moorings from which to operate.
Commissioner Benak.
And so the 50,000 contribution does not buy them anything specifically where they have, they have the right to sublet it, sublet it.
Right.
Apparently I'm having a problem with English language today, but they don't have any limitations. Other folks can use this. Is that what I'm hearing? I want to make sure.
Well, the, yeah, I think that through Carver, if another barge company approached them saying, "Hey, I would like to come in here, too," and with the port's concurrence, it will be able to use it. It doesn't limit it that they can just use McDonough Barge. It's the only company that has shown any interest in coming into the port at this time.
But let's say others do, and we want to be able to offer them the opportunity. Carver doesn't have any ability to say, "No, I've got the sublet rights, therefore..." Maybe I see Jennifer nodding her head, if maybe she could just explain that we're not in any way limiting ourselves. That's what I want to make sure.
No, the mooring area is actually leased to Carver, so it's for Carver's use, and then Carver has subleased it out to McDonough, but it is, it's under Carver's use only, just like the land that they have, that they currently have a lease with, it's only for their use as well.
So this, the ability to bring other barges is subject to Carver's approval. They've got the ability to say yea or nay.
Yes, it is. Now, just to clarify it further, it's in our mutual best interest, Carver's and the ports, to select a user that will really, or in this case McDonough, who will really be helpful to the port and to them. So therefore, if McDonough doesn't have to be the only one they can choose in the future, they are able to choose others, because at the end of the day, what they want to do, they're paying a lease, they're paying a rent. They want to make sure they get a return on their rent, so if McDonough or other barge companies were to come to them and say, "I want to expand," or have a new barge company, I think it's, it's expected that they will do so, also bring in others.
And I hate to ask this, because it's probably in the backup, but I haven't read it. What is the timing of the lease that Carver has?
Five years.
Just five years?
It's five years.
With three, five-year extension.
Okay, all right.
This is a new, I may add, Madam Chair, this is kind of a new project that Dave Sanford brought up a while back to explore the opportunity to have, you know, a barge mooring and a barge service at the port, which we don't have today. So I think it's a good new business opportunity, and Carver decided also to partner with us to get this project done. It will bring in new jobs and new business.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Benak, second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Carlos.
Do we need to execute Resolution PA 1920? There was two down here on the recommendation.
I don't see that. Where are you?
Yes, it is.
Where's that?
I want to execute, I move we execute Resolution PA 1920.
Second.
Motion, I'm not sure what the motion is, I'm sorry.
Poor submarine.
Oh, I see it. I see where you got it from. Motion to approve Resolution PA 19-20 by Commissioner Trace, second by, I'm not sure who, Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. It is approved. All right, it's just not on the agenda. All right, anything else on that before we move forward?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I did want to bring up one thing. I wanted to commend, I think it's Customs. I read in the paper while we were on recess, and I almost called you guys, but I didn't want to bother you. Good job that they did on finding the two, I believe there were two insects that they found on an inspection.
Yes.
That we do not have here in the state of Florida, so I've heard of Customs doing that before, and it just shows they really do a thorough job. So if you would take back my thanks to them on that, I thought it was fantastic.
Be glad in the board's, in the board's name. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that was, is it USDA or whatever that's on the port site that found the insects? Only because I went for a tour there the other day, and they have to inspect every, they randomly inspect every trailer.
But it comes under Customs, doesn't it? Or is it just USDA?
Well, it is, in fact, it is a combination. Originally, USDA was a separate agency that was independent from Customs, and then back when the Customs Reform Act occurred, the USDA inspections were taken under Customs, and AFIS, which is the insect, the insect control, was a separate agency, so really a combination of both.
Okay.
One identifies it, and the other determines the risk of that insect.
Well, whomever. If you would give them my appreciation, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the team, for the Port Authority. Executive Director comments, Carlos?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay. Again, we'll open public comment. Anyone from the public want to come up and make any comments? Man, I can't believe it. It's always amazing. Nobody ever does. All right, we'll close public comment. Commissioner comments, anything from Commissioner Whitmore? Tell us about your tour.
I'll tell it under Commissioners' comments.
Port Authority tour, she's talking about.
Port Authority.
I know, I was going to put it under comments, because we have people here that still want to do public comment before we break for lunch, so I'll wait till at the end.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments?
I'm looking forward to my tour tomorrow.
I heard about it, yes. Yes, and Representative Newton's going to be with you, right?
Right, after the wing day, yep.
Awesome. Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
All right, well, not seeing anything else, we'll go ahead and close the Port Authority meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos. It's good seeing you.
Okay, at this time, we'll just take about a two-minute break to let the clerks need to switch things around, so if you just let us know when you're ready to go.
We're fine.
Oh, wow. Very efficient. Good job. Nope, we're not. We're going to go back to work.
Okay, moving forward on the, I guess we'll, I'm going to continue with the future agenda items, because I suspect that's what the few people that are here would like to come down. And the first one would be Joan Mushcamp Champ. She's still here?
Mr. Chairman.
Spelled that right. Had to do with the size of the library?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the folks that were here for the East County Library had to leave for the day, and however, they mentioned they had sent out some information to everyone. I got an opportunity to speak with them about our reasoning behind why we're looking currently at just around a 24,000 square foot library with potential area for phases and future expansion. They wanted to, of course, reiterate, they'd like to see more. However, they seem pleased with the information. I'm going to send them something back in writing. Thank you.
Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the administrator. I had had a conversation with Sherry regarding this, and, you know, I think the main thing, and I was going to mention that today after the public spoke about the library, that the main concern for me, I mean, we could, you know, get the money together, and maybe they could help find donors to contribute money to build it, but it doesn't do us a bit of good unless we can afford the staff necessary to run it. So that being said, I really think that the Friends of Lakewood Ranch for the library need to work with our staff and with the administrator and myself to make sure that this library is a success, and we can move it forward, and the more of a positive relationship that we can have, the sooner perhaps we can expand in size. So that was my comment. Thank you, Sherry, for that.
Next would be Synth- Next would be Cynthia Khan. Please state your name and you'll have three minutes.
She's got your cute shoes. Cynthia Khan. And I've been a Manatee County resident for 16 years, year-round. Regarding a proposed pet ordinance, I will discuss now how the successful business of selling sick and parasitic animals requires and uses consumer fraud. In 180 seconds, I can only give you a brief outline of a three-step scheme to deceive that revolves around a company named Positive touted as a mediation company, yet it is actually contracted by and working for Petland. Positive represents itself as working for the consumer, which is blatantly untrue. Positive is also known as Pet Solutions and Third Party Pet. The first step is the customer is required to use Positive when buying at Petland as the point of contact for health issues with the new pet. The second step is Petland conceals and furthers its deception by requiring customers to use Petland's own veterinarian if they want the vet bill to be free. This minimizes exposures to other independent vets who would inform the customers that they were sold a sick puppy at the time of purchase. The third step in this scheme is that Petland gives customers two instructional sheets regarding hypoglypsemia and canine cough. Why do they do this? In the instructions, they are told that the symptoms may be annoying, but nothing serious, and should run its course, although these are possible life-threatening diseases. But in effect, the scheme is to minimize the seriousness of the symptoms that the puppy may have in order to dissuade the customer from seeking immediate medical care and run out the clock on Petland's timeline of responsibility. Petland's misrepresentations allow it to charge premium prices for puppies that consumers believe are certified to be healthy and backed up by warranties. Yet these warranties do not follow Florida Pet Law. As an example, in bold print on their warranty that states no refunds or returns. That is the opposite of what Florida Pet Law states. Petland knows full well it is selling mill-sourced animals prone to illness and other defects with sham warranties and offers of help for sick and dying puppies. And they're not worth the paper they're printed on. The sources that I will give you, I'll refer you to the lawsuit in Atlanta, the federal lawsuit, the class action lawsuit, has the franchisee agreement. And I have other documents to leave with you that are from Petland that the customer signs when they buy a puppy.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Glenda Anthony.
My name is Glenda Anthony and I've been a resident of Manatee County for 14 years, year-round as well. These are a few things to think about when the new animal ordinance comes up for a vote. Lobbyists will fly in from all over the country. People who do not live here, do not pay your taxes and are here only because of their own financial interest. They are not your constituents. Petland will have their suntanned, Armani suit-wearing lawyers stand in front of the commission and bully you with threats. The all-time favorite, we will sue you. Store owners will plead and carry on, wah, wah, please don't put us out of business, we will starve. The facts are that 62 jurisdictions in Florida have passed an ordinance to ban selling animals. Few have sued. Those that have sued, always lost. The stores that sued have always lost. Florida has won both a federal and state case against a pet store lawsuit. Approximately 10% of all Petlands in the U.S. do not sell puppies. There are 35 Petlands in Canada and not one sells puppies. There are, at the present time, numerous pet stores in Manatee County that thrive without selling puppies. Selling dogs is not a right. Pet stores will lean on the old reliable, we only buy from USDA licensed breeders, as if this is something to be proud of. The proof, which has been and will continue to be demonstrated in this room, is this. USDA simply means USDA puppy mill. USDA offers zero protection to animals or consumers. Those out-of-town lobbyists I mentioned will suggest that you leave this matter to the state. Municipalities are always complaining when the state legislature preempts them from passing laws that benefit their own communities. Animals are offered little help in Tallahassee and there is no money to lobby for puppies. The lobbyists will try to convince you that we don't need a ban, just new regulations. This is nonsense. As you know, the county has neither the resources nor the ability to monitor these businesses, which is exactly why we are here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm one of those.
I think through a process of elimination. Richard. Please come up and state your name and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for hanging in there.
You're welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Richard Matheson. We have coined a term, Minnesota, which is the combination of the words Manatee and Sarasota, of course. I have lived and paid taxes in Manatee County for over 20 years and I also am a full-time resident. But I enjoy a Manatee or a Minnesota lifestyle. We socialize and shop together, enjoy the golf and weather together. We golf and enjoy the theater. Why do we use the word Minnesota? Because we share the same values. Three years ago, Sarasota decided to adopt a new animal ordinance to no longer permit the retail, sale of commercially bred dogs from puppy mills. I emphasize puppy mills. Now that the ban having been enforced, Petland has picked up and moved up the road to Manatee County. If we do indeed share the same values, I'd like to ask you, my Commissioners, why would we accept what Sarasota rejects as animal abuse and customer fraud? To answer this question, one must first understand what dog farming is, puppy mills. Some mills can hold up to 1,000 dogs. What they all have in common is that the mother and father dog are incarcerated for life, they live in small cages, breeding until their bodies give out. The lack of hygiene gives way to bacteria, infection, and parasites. This is their life until their end. They live, never feeling grass under their paws or a kind human touch or a soft bed. Some confined for life can no longer even walk. Mind you, the dogs endure year-round temperatures, the sub-freezing cold and blistering heat. They become broken both physically and psychologically. Buying these puppies, puppy mill puppies in stores only perpetuates and supports these farms. Now you, my Manatee Commissioners, will take up the questions Sarasota faced three years ago. My friends and neighbors do not want our country, our county, to support this type of business that Sarasota and over 50 other Florida communities rejected. We believe now that we know better collectively, we should do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very well said. Is there anybody else at this point in the public that would like to come down and address the board on future agenda items? Uh, seeing nobody, we will close Citizens' Comments on future agenda items and will now open up Citizens' Comments on consent agenda items only. I have one person who has signed up, Hunter Miller. That's on consent item number 40.
Forty?
Number 40, four-zero.
Good morning. My name's Hunter Miller. I'm the Florida Gulf Coast Campaign Organizer for Oceana. We work to protect and restore the world's oceans. And I've been working closely with local municipalities up and down Florida's Gulf Coast on protecting our coast from expanded offshore drilling. What we saw last year, in January of last year, the federal government opened up nearly 90% of U.S. waters to potentially expanding offshore drilling and, and many of those places also includes seismic airgun blasting. And so what we've seen is local municipalities, county governments largely leading the way to protect our coast and our, our local economies by passing resolutions. Here in Florida, we have nearly 100 cities and towns that have been on the record about where they stand on this issue and that's important. We saw this month that the city of Anna Maria passed a resolution, the city of Bradenton Beach passed a resolution this month, and then also Holmes Beach is set to pass a resolution. So it's important because it empowers our federally elected officials and our governor to be as strong as possible about protecting the businesses and the natural ecosystems that we so love and cherish and joy and rely on. So I'm just here to, to thank you for, for considering this resolution and I hope that you can join the other counties that have taken a position and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that has anything to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing nobody, we will close public comment on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Don't we have to take the one item? Thirty-five? Yeah.
Oh, yes, with the removal of number 35.
Yes, thank you.
Correct, 35 is the one that was to be continued, I believe. So your motion would be to, who's was it?
With the exception of number 35.
And a second by Commissioner Ball. Servia, then Ball.
Mr. Chairman, before you break for lunch, may I mention something about the closed caption?
Okay, we need to vote on this first.
Thank you.
So all those in favor of the consent agenda minus item 35?
Mm-hmm.
Will you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved, seven-zero. What a morning. All right, Sherry, the floor is yours.
I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt your motion there. The, I just wanted to, for anyone watching and for when you come back at 1:30, closed caption is still running. We've got some people at home monitoring and some staff monitoring. It's having a little trouble. It's, it's, it's its first trial period, so if you get any, anybody commenting back, we, this is, the trial will continue to improve it. Has to start recognizing your voices and again, if you can, ask the chairman for permission to speak and not talk over each other, it really helps. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will recess for lunch. We'll see everyone back here at 1:30. Thank you.
Talking to Mickey for like a half hour.
Actually, I'm... What happened to Carol?
Call the meeting to order. I believe we are on item 64. This is under advertised public hearings, presentations upon request. So I'm not sure, I think it's 64, special road assessment.
She must be here.
Not sure who's.
She's been here waiting patiently.
Looks like she's on.
Oh, okay.
This is the second public hearing, Kalina Taro, Special Assessment Coordinator for Public Works. This is the second public hearing for the road paving project off 17th Street East. So Ray been, the project's been approved, it's been constructed, so now we just need to establish the assessment role. That's it.
Seeing nobody on the board, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come down and discuss the road assessment project on 17th Street East? Seeing nobody from the public come forward, and we will close public comment. The pleasure of the board.
Move to approve the assessment role for project number 5155160 on 17th Street East. And then there's another one. Can we do them both at the same time?
Yeah, go ahead and do the second one separately.
Okay. Oh, separately, okay.
Okay, so let's just, this, okay, well, let's, let's do the first one first.
That's what I did.
Right, and that was on a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Bellamy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, seven-zero. Now, number two.
No, six to, where's Carol?
Six.
Don't know.
Six.
We don't know.
Carol's not here, so six.
We have one more.
We have one more.
Move to adoption of resolution, R-19-081, confirming the special assessment role and imposing liens on 17th Street East.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Vanessa, you're on the board, do you have a comment or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we will now open this up to public comment. Anybody from the public would like to come down, speak? Seeing nobody, we will close public comment. On a motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Trace. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
Six to zero.
Six to zero.
Six to zero, I'm sorry.
I was here, seven to zero. I'm here.
We see you.
Did you vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the next item is item 65. Good job, Kalina. Good job. Yes, thank you, Kalina. Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Again, presentation upon request and we have Ms. Lopez here to give us a rundown.
Good afternoon and welcome back. Jerry Lopez, Director of Redevelopment and Economic Opportunity. As we discussed at the May 15 meeting where we brought forward the recommendations for our, how to spend our Community Development Block Grant, as well as our home investment partnership funds and our ESG dollars. We have advertised, we do have 15 projects that are recommended for funding. We have had this out for public comment and this is for our new fiscal year. Just as a quick recap, we are slated to receive about 1.8 million in our Community Development Block Grant, 623,000 in our home dollars, and 160,000 for our ESG. And I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
There you go, Jerry.
Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you, Jerry. I just have a quick question in general about CDBG monies. So I recently met with someone from Gulf Coast Legal Services and they have a CDBG grant.
Yes.
But they are finding it very difficult to spend their money in accordance with the restrictions on the money. And so my question to you is, does the money come with restrictions from HUD, from the federal government? Or does the Manatee County create the restrictions? Or is it a combination of both?
They're very specific restrictions from HUD, they fall into our public services category. So with public services, we do have to income qualify the, the clients and that is part of the difficulty that they're having. So we have, have provided a lot of technical assistance to Gulf Coast Legal Services about how they can do this and how they, that they're able to try to document what it is that they can. They're still having a difficult time, so we're still working through this. We have had a conversation with HUD where we've kind of laid out what some of those difficulties are, but it's very specific in the regs of what some of those requirements are. Bill, do you want to, do you have anything else to add?
Only if Jerry hadn't covered it, there is a presumed benefit for those who are elderly or for those who could be disabled. So, so far, those are pretty much the only clients we've been able to serve because they haven't been able to get the income qualification documented correctly.
But we are working with them to try to work through to see how, how we can do this because this is a very important service that they want to provide. So we're trying to figure out how best to do this and we have reached out to HUD for some guidance.
And I really do appreciate the work that you're doing with them to help them. What, they explained to me that in the past, the same grant money has been used in a more, with a more broad scope and that they were able to serve hundreds, like 700 people on fair housing issues. But just this past year, I think February of this year was when the grant re-upped again, it was very tightly constrained and they have, to date, helped one person. So I appreciate anything that you can do to support them and if there is a way to modify the restrictions so that we can really help the people that we were intending to help.
Commissioner Servia, one of the other things that was going on with their grant is that we had made it to benefit those who were having fair housing issues or landlord issues. They do get another funding source that helps out elderly, but there was no way on intake of determining whether or not they had a fair housing issue or not. And at the end of it, we found that we weren't serving anybody with fair housing violations. So we did have them also modify their intake application, so if somebody had a... So we did have them also modify their intake application, so if somebody had a perceived fair housing violation and they indicated that at intake, then we would allow them to proceed with that client. But the problem was, is that we do have these recaps that were established by HUD. One of the requirements with our fair housing plan and our consolidated plan is that we address fair housing issues, particularly in the recaps, and we weren't getting those results. So we had to, you know, talk to them and try to restructure what they were doing. And at one time, I think it was a lot more of a broad scope that they could handle with other clients. That was under a different consolidated plan before we had our fair housing plan in place by HUD.
Right, and I understand that, Bill, and thank you for the detailed explanation. And just for the benefit of the board, so that you understand, the particular issue that we met on was regarding the recap area in the Pride Park community, and it was to address fair housing issues and outreach primarily in education and assistance for any violations of fair housing. Probably the biggest challenge is that there's no place in that area that is really easily available to meet with the public. Schools come to the closest thing, but it's very difficult to meet in the schools after five o'clock. There's also a challenge with a lot of people that fear the government in those areas, and so they don't come out and say, "I'm having a problem," because right now, they're scared. So there's a lot of challenges, and I don't know how to address them, but I just want you to know that it's difficult for them to get the money to the people who need it the most, and whatever you can do to help them would be great. Thank you.
One final point I'd like to make, if you may not be aware, this was from a past action plan, but we did fund a community center for, a residence center for the Housing Authority. It's off of Fifty-seventh and around the Eleventh Street Course East area, and part of the discussion surrounding funding that facility was whether or not it could be used for like fair housing outreach and other, other things to reach out to the recaps, and they were in agreement with that. So that is under construction.
Yes, sir, and I'm aware of that as I sit on the board of the Manatee Housing Authority, and so that is like a modular home, kind of like we use for the schools, for overflow classroom space. And it will be in Pine Village, I do believe, and so I, I'm hopeful that the whole community will feel welcome to use that, but I have a feeling it's going to be more Pine Village people who use that. So I think that is a challenge, but it's, it's good that we have something coming on board. Thank you.
Okay, I just, you know, have one comment, just to, to me, you know, HUD's number one priority is the Fair Housing Act, and I would think that it is imperative upon us to make sure that those rules and regs that the HUD comes down with under the Fair Housing Act are met, and that they're pretty good and pretty diligent, that if you violate any of them, they will quickly pull your funding, from what I understand. So it's, you know, it's, it's great to be able to try to help everybody, but, you know, we do have so many instances of fair housing violations, you know, from time to time here that, you know, I, you know, respect the job you all are doing to try to make sure we stay within those guidelines, because if we don't, you know, my understanding is HUD will pull that funding very, very quickly. So Commissioner Bellamy.
Yes, I have a couple of things. As far as Gulf Coast Legal, I have a recent experience where they were in about a fair housing allegation, and with the things to help Mr. Palmer, I referred them, the individuals to Gulf Coast Legal, and they actually intervened, and I think that's still ongoing, so that's a good, that's a good thing as far as what Gulf Coast Legal does. I have a question concerning the community development block grant, and how does that support affordable housing? Affordable housing?
Sure, so, as you know, as we've been discussing, as our state funding has dwindled for affordable housing, we have allocated approximately, let's see our list here, 338,000 from this coming year, specifically for rehabilitation of income-qualified homeowner-occupied single-family homes with priority to those recaps, but this is anywhere that you have CDBG eligible. So we have that outlined as part of CDBG, and also for the Habitat for Humanity, the Polling Gardens project, we have 780,000 earmarked for infrastructure to help with that single-family development, and that's 16 units. And under our home, we have 111,000 outlined also for our rehab program.
Outside of the grants that come, do we have any other allocations coming from the county for affordable housing? We do?
Yes, so under our livable manatee program, we have that trust fund that pays for the impact fees of those that, that qualify. There were two Luras that you approved on consent today for that, so that is specific county funds.
Thank you.
Just one more I want to highlight, and this is a new one. We are going to be allocating $300,000 for, under our home program, for rental development, which is one of the first that we're doing. So we have a project that's coming forward that we're going to help as part of a loan to be able to get that project going, and that is in our South County recap area. So that's set to come in Ninth Street East, just south of Fifty-seventh, right? Fifty-third? Fifty-third? Near the Windexy that's there.
Okay, Commissioner Benak.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of the comments made are very applicable. I mean, yes, CDBG comes with significant rules and regulations that we have to follow and have to make sure, you know, and it's, it's been, we, we know that it's been looked at at the federal level every year. We don't know whether it's going to be funded or not, right? I mean, there's been times when we think that it's not going to happen, but, you know, we have participated, Manatee County, and without any problems, so I think it is very, very, very important that we continue to do that, and I understand that, you know, that it makes it difficult for smaller organizations, probably like Gulf Coast Legal Services, to comply with some of the rules, but we really don't have any choice to be able to continue this, because this program does provide for funding that we can't, you know, we really can't get anywhere else. I mean, to have this funding, and it, you know, back in the day, when I worked as a staff member for Manatee County, which is what I said earlier, but apparently in the wrong way.
That's what you meant to say.
That's what I meant to say. When I worked as a staff member for the county, you know, we had to apply for discretionary block grant money, but that money did go significantly to community development improvements, things like water lines in Talavasht, water lines in Parish. So this kind of infrastructure that's being done in Sammaset is incredibly important for affordable housing. You know, they wouldn't be able to do this project without that partnership, and so, I mean, that's such a wonderful benefit for the entire area of Sammaset. Plus, to bring the affordable housing is just kind of almost like icing on the cake. So I, I really do appreciate the attention, you know, it's not easy to get these funds. I mean, staff has to jump through incredible hoops to make sure that we get it and get it done, so I want to say thank you. Obviously, I just saw Diana at lunch, you know, they're trusting us to do this because we said we were going to do it, so I'm going to make a motion that we do adopt resolution R-19096 approving the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan for Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorize the chairman to sign all submission documents.
Second.
And I have a question.
Okay, yeah, hold on, let me just write those down, okay. First, we have Commissioner Whitmore.
Just what Ms. Dee had brought up earlier, if I can, if I remember right, Visible Men Academy?
Yes.
There was an agreement in there that they would use that for community events, and that, they got an $800,000 piece of property for 80,000, and that was part of the, the deal, so I don't know if you've, they've approached him or you have, but that was part of the program, I remember that. And then I got a question. You said you're on the Manatee Housing Authority. Do we give funds to them? Because I, okay, well, why is it called Manatee? There's a Bradenton Housing Authority and Manatee, so there are no funds. Okay, that's why, then. Okay, because I just know I got taken off all my boards when I got on the board, so, okay, good.
I just want to, just real quick to clarify, if I may, that the Manatee County Housing Authority does apply to us for, if it's a specific project that meets the CDBG regulations and requirements, they have been awarded funds, but it's for very specific projects that meets all the guidelines, like that residence center construction that we were just talking about.
But it's not our monies, it's other monies. It's not Manatee County monies.
It's, yeah, these were CDBG dollars.
Oh, well then, has anybody looked at that? Because I, I was under the impression commissioners, you can be on it, but then you have a conflict when we vote on the budget and stuff like that, and you won't be able to vote on the budget. So I'm sure you've already checked into that, but I didn't think, okay, so if we do contribute, I would just ask to make sure, or just don't vote on the budget, Ms. Dee, if that, if you really want to be on the board, because I know you've been on it a long time. So I think that's what others had done in the past.
Okay, Commissioner Servia.
Thank you, and thank you, Carol, for that, and I've actually had a conversation with Mr. Palmer at least once, and with the attorney for the Housing Authority, to make sure that there are no conflicts, and I've been told each time that there are no conflicts. So I will continue to look for any, and please bring them to my attention if you see any, because I don't want there to be an issue. So I'm going to support the motion, but I am, I guess my biggest fear for Gulf Coast Legal Aid is that we might lose that money if it's not spent, right? So if there's any way to help communicate with them and help find solutions, like perhaps the language can be amended for next year because it's been problematic, I appreciate the Visible Men information, Carol, because I did study that piece of property that the county ended up selling for like a tenth of what they bought it for to Visible Men, and it was supposed to be for a community center. And I've actually asked some questions about that, and my question that remains is, did that money that we received, that 85,000 or whatever it was, go back into the TIF district, or did it go into the general fund? Because it really should be benefiting South County, and so I know staff is looking into that.
Yeah, and Commissioner, we did take a look at that, and I'm still kind of just making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, but from the information I have, it did go back into the CRA pot.
Okay, that's wonderful. And so, just so everybody understands, the requirement that's been difficult to meet is that it's, this is for fair housing outreach and education, and the meetings have to be conducted with a minimum of five people who live in the recap area, and that you're able to gather addresses and prove they live in the recap area. Many people are reluctant to write down their address. It's difficult to reach these people. I suggested that maybe they could canvass and go door-to-door and drop off pamphlets and talk with people to ask them how things are going, but that's not permitted in the grant. So if there's any way to amend the language so that it can be used for what it's intended, just, I'm bringing that to your attention, if there's anything that the county can do to help. Thank you.
Seeing nobody else on the board, we'll open this for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak up, seeing nobody from the public, we'll close public comment. We have a motion by Commissioner Benak, seconded by Commissioner Servia to adopt resolution R-19096. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is, a presentation is scheduled, and this is on a proposed eminent domain settlement. I guess Ann's going to present this. This is Pamela. Pamela.
Please, one last time.
That seems so good.
I'm wrong.
So many lawyers, not enough time.
Everyone?
To the contrary, not enough lawyers.
He's got dead ears, doesn't he?
It's all perspective.
Good afternoon, Chairman Johnson, members of the board, Madam Administrator, Mr. Palmer. I'm Pamela DiAgostino, Assistant County Attorney, and today I am presenting to you for consideration a settlement offer made by the FDOT in an eminent domain action. The Florida Department of Transportation will soon be undertaking a project to improve the interchange of I-75 and US 301. You can see it on the aerial here. I just wanted you to have a visual representation of the area we're talking about. To complete the project, FDOT needed to acquire certain property to be used, which included a restaurant, what, what used to be known as the restaurant Johnny Leverock Seafood, located right here, at 5317 Nineteenth Street East in Ellington. Pre-suit negotiations with the property owner were unsuccessful, unfortunately, and so the FDOT had to file its eminent domain action to acquire the needed interests. The county was joined as a party in this litigation because the Leverock's property is currently encumbered by a conservation easement that was given to the county back in 2000 as a part of the original site plan approval. Roughly, the easement borders along this area right here, along the Manatee River. The purpose of the conservation easement was to protect a required 30-foot wetland buffer associated with the Mangrove Fringe along the shoreline. In 2005, the county did release a portion of the easement for the purpose of correcting an error that was contained in the original legal description. So today, the easement encovers, encumbers approximately .35 acres of land. In April of 2018, the FDOT obtained its order of taking and title to the entire Leverock's property. Sorry, this has gone dark. Should have put my screensaver off. There we go. So they obtained it pursuant to their deposit of 1.9 million into the registry. Then in February of 2019, the FDOT proposed an offer to settle with the owners of the former Leverock's property for $5 million, which they accepted. They further agreed to pay the owners $728,000 in attorney's fees and experts' fees and costs. So now the FDOT has approached us and is wanting to resolve our interest in this eminent domain matter with respect to the conservation easement, and they've asked the county to essentially waive its apportionment claim to the compensation for the value of that easement to execute a release of the conservation easement, and they have agreed to pay us $5,612.50 for our experts' fees. If the board approves this proposed settlement, all litigation relative to this matter will in fact be concluded and resolved, and the county will incur no additional expenses. If the board rejects the settlement that's proposed by the FDOT, we will proceed to defend and seek recovery for our apportionment claim. So you have before you either accept the settlement and adopt a proposed resolution that we've prepared for you, Resolution 19-072, which would authorize the chairperson to execute the release of the conservation easement and authorize the county attorney or his designee to execute and deliver to the FDOT a proposed stipulative final judgment and all other associated paperwork to conclude the case, or if you elect to reject the settlement, then you authorize the county attorney or his designee to inform the FDOT of the rejection and will proceed with litigating. Does anyone have any questions about the options or what we're presenting or what the FDOT is offering?
Couple, I believe. Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question, and after my briefing yesterday, I started thinking about, is there a difference between a buffer and a buffer with a conservation easement, and is there greater protection or is there not? And what I concluded is that I think the only benefit is that on a survey, it's easily visible where the conservation easement is, where the protection is desired, and with the buffer, it's, it's just not surveyed, so you don't know exactly, you can estimate. I still don't understand why the DOT wants that removed, but I think I'm comfortable with the county attorney's opinion, but it is a little troubling to me that they're asking for the conservation easement to be removed.
Well, they, they need...
They simply want to own the land free and clear of any easements, any encumbrances of any nature.
Correct. They want clean title.
Yeah, they own the underlying fee as we speak. The only remaining encumbrance is this conservation easement, I believe, yes.
Correct.
Blow it out and put a road there.
I get ready to do.
Okay. Done, Ms. Dee?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Trace.
As the person that drives that all the time, we need this road fixed. They paid us very good compensation for closing down. I always forget, is it Eighteenth? Sixteenth? I always forget, is it 18th, 16th, 18th?
Hi.
So, I'm going to move...
It's the road, the road right here.
Right over that road is, they gave us very good compensation for that. So, I'm going to say that, move to adopt Resolution R. 19072.
Second. That's to accept it, right?
That is to accept it.
The motion, respectfully, Commissioners, the motion would be to adopt Action Item Two.
Two, yes.
Seeing nobody else, we will open this up to public comment. Anybody from the public? Seeing nobody from the public come down, we have a motion by Commissioner Trace, seconded by Commissioner Whitmore, to accept Option Two. Is that correct?
Action Item Number Two.
Yes.
Action Item Number Two.
Adopt Action Item Number Two.
All the, oops, Commissioner Servia.
And just one comment, it is my understanding that there are no improvements that are planned within what is now the conservation easement. Is that correct?
I can't speak for what the FDOT plans to do relative to that portion. I don't, there may very well be infrastructure that's planned as a part of the improvement. That, I, that's an engineering question, and I can't honestly answer all of what the FDOT plans to do in terms of its construction.
Okay. Commissioner Trace.
I have been told that what they're planning to do is basically, there will be a, to proceed south on the interstate, there will, this will be nothing but a ramp, and you actually will not get on the interstate until you're on the other side of the river. So, my guess is there will be pillars or pilings or something in a ramp through the property. At least, that's what I've been told as of six weeks ago.
Right.
I'm sure engineering changes.
Well, they're certainly using the Leverock's property, but I just don't know whether the easement area itself is something that they intend to construct anything in.
And the reason I ask is just because water quality is such a tremendously big issue, and so whatever we and the state can do to, you know, protect those buffers is so desirable, but I understand the need for this improvement. I understand some roadways do go through buffers. I just wanted to understand it a little more clearly, but I am going to support the motion.
Well, if it gives you some comfort, we did survey the county staff and the various departments, and we inquired about the easement itself, and we were told that when the FDOT uses the property, they will likely be subject to FDEP and Army Corps of Engineers permitting requirements.
That's correct.
So, it's likely that there will be some wetland protection there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banack.
And thank you, and that was going to be my question and point was that this is DOT, they don't come through Manatee County for permitting. However, they do go through the Department of Environmental Protection, and they have huge regulations that they have to comply with whenever they go through any kind of road construction, but they do not have to comply with our standards. They don't go through us. Is that correct, County Attorney?
That is correct, Commissioner. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Trace, seconded again by Commissioner Whitmore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pamela.
Good job, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along now, sixty-seven dashboard report. Any questions? Carrie, you have any input there?
No, no further, no, just presented it as is, and if there are any questions, nothing significant. Just looking for...
Okay, so at this point, we will move on to Commissioner comments. I just have one, just as it's a point of business, I spoke with Mike Bennett this morning, and he asked me to, given the fact that myself and Priscilla are both on the canvassing board, and that will both be up for reelection in the 2020 cycle, and the state has mandated that he have somebody there at his conference in Orlando in October, and so he's asked that we appoint another person to the canvassing board that would not be up for reelection at that time. So, I'm just looking for...
I move that we nominate Reggie to be on the canvassing board.
Second.
I was going, I'm excited about the opportunity to learn that.
Good, good, yeah.
I'm serious.
It's very interesting to serve on the canvassing board. Was the last time, I will tell you, but you would need to be ready for long Saturdays even, perhaps.
And in 2020, you may be there a long time.
Mr. Chair, what you ask for?
Yes, Carol.
We were all given a memo a while ago whether we wanted to attend, and somebody said it was really good, so I think three of us are going whether we're on the canvassing board or not. Some of us were, but I'm going to go to it, because everybody said it was worth going.
Well, and you're, again, certainly welcome to, it's just that we have to name...
Oh, no, 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 I know that.
And, you know, who has to be there.
Beat up the new guy, that's what that is.
I would assume, though, that the chair would, could possibly name a new one in the new chair, because that's what the new chair...
I had to do that in 2016.
From what he told me is, the meeting is this October. The new chair doesn't get elected till, what, December? And this person has to be there for this meeting.
Okay, okay, so you're it.
So, there's a timing issue there.
So, then we need the alternate, too?
You need an alternate.
I would like to nominate Misty to be the alternate. You're not up for election, are you?
Misty's going to DC.
I'm going to DC.
She's going to, yeah.
That's why I can't go.
And I was actually going to go to the file, but this needs to be done.
Yeah. I nominate Carol Whitmore.
Second.
Because she's already going.
Okay, so we have two, we have one as the primary, so I guess we have to vote on it, if I'm not mistaken, yes?
Just made a motion.
So, we've made a mo, who's made it, see?
I did Reggie.
Priscilla did Reggie, and did somebody, did we need a second?
Vanessa seconded it.
I know.
A second, no, I did Carol.
Someone seconded it.
I have no idea what I'm getting.
Betsy seconded it, hasn't she?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Reggie as the canvassing board representative. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
You didn't open up for public comment.
Okay, anybody from the public like to discuss this appointment?
Just saying, technically, you have to open it up.
Seeing nobody, we will close public comment, and again, the motion has passed seven to zero. Now, we need to have another motion to appoint Carol as the alternate.
I think Vanessa made that motion.
I did.
Vanessa, Vanessa made it, and who seconded it?
I think I seconded it.
Okay, so we had a motion by Vanessa, seconded by Priscilla, for Carol to be the alternate. We'll open this up to the public. Anybody from the public like to comment on this?
Can you tell who's running for real?
Seeing nobody from the public, we'll close public comment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. That's the only business item I have. We'll start with Carol, if you want to...
I got a few things, you know, you all know, I've always learned, when these meetings come, I give you an update of what's been going on, and that's how I learned in my previous life on the islands for years. And so, I still keep to that, and some don't, and that's fine, but I always like to keep you up to date what I'm doing, so in case you get a question or something, then you know, you know what's going on. First of all, two days or one day after Steve left, Congressman Buchanan asked to have a tour of Robinson Preserve, and Betsy was out of town, so I was the designated person in line as the, I think I'm the second vice chair. And so, attended, we went to Robinson, we went with, he invited whoever he wanted, and Charlie Hunziker came, and Nick also came, and he wanted to see for himself the blue-green algae, and actually hadn't been out there, so it was a good experience. And he, he had a long talk, so whatever he could do federally, he would, and you know, he supports the Red Tide Initiative to help fund that, and also the water quality stuff. And, you know, that's a big thing that, for everybody now, so he actually sought for himself, and he was glad he came. The same day, I had had a meeting scheduled with Charlie Hunziker, Rusty Chin, as Dr. Barber, Will Robinson came with me, but Will came also out to the thing with Congressman Damon and others regarding, I wanted an update, because I try to do this every summer, to get an update on what's going on, and this one was regarding them with the stormwater quality as far as oyster restoration and clam initiative. And I had all the guys in the same room, and it was great. Ed Childs was there. We all met at the beach house, we all bought our own lunches, and we all spent a couple hours talking about this. He, I asked Sheri yesterday, maybe in the future, that this group of individuals come to a work session at one time, so that we all get an idea of what everybody's doing, because unless we actually can take the initiative to do this, everybody's in their own little silos, and it'd be good to have a, one, you know, message from all of us. So, I asked Sheri in the future if we could do that, or you could also meet with all them individually. I think it'd be good if we all heard the same information to get it out to the public. I invited Rusty, because he's out there in the community, and for him to know that actually we are working on stuff, you know, we get dragged down on social media, but he was very impressed in all that we are working on. I guess there's going to be something coming before us for our legislative platform that Charlie will be bringing, and Nick is aware of it, and it will be about, something about stormwater quality and this initiative. Some of the funeral home directors asked to meet with me, issues with unclaimed bodies and injured burials.
Oh, boy.
Remember, I'm on the Medical Examiners Commission, so it kind of fit right in. But anyway, met with staff, and we're actually redoing the process for them, because they feel like sometimes it's inequity, and some of the times, the hospitals really want that person out of the hospital, because they have others coming in, et cetera. So, our staff is going to work with them, and they're coming up with a process, and they'll be included in it, so they were happy about that. I did tour the port last Thursday with Dave, Carlos was out of the country, and as you all have heard, we had a lot of good things going on. I like to see it, myself, and I sat down, and I guess they brought the financial person, the new marketing person, and I like to, you know, when we have our meetings, that's all planned, and we got the agendas, et cetera, but I actually got a tour and got to ride around to see exactly what we're doing, our construction and stuff like that, and I think Reggie, you're going there tomorrow, right? And you'll probably report on that. So, it was good. I just did that on a whim, and Dave was available, so. The panhandlers, that's done, we're working on that. Remember when Dr. Tally came, he had the eleven acres out east on Morgan Johnson? He and his entourage came, and John O., who was a godsend, came, and we all met, sat down together. We told them that he couldn't do what he wanted, but here's what he could do with his property, because his property was eleven acres, zoned A1, but he'd been homesteaded as residential, and you planners down there knew, so John told him what he could do, like a bed and breakfast, stuff like that, but he could not use it as a wedding venue. Where we see out in North County, we see the farmers, they're still using it as ag, and that's why. So, they were satisfied with that. And I'd like, Vanessa, if you could, I don't know how often that Water Board is met yet, but do you think you could give us a report in the future? I don't know how many times they've met, what is going on, what do we tell the public? You know, I've had a few people, I said, well, the governor appointed a Water Board, but I'm not sure how many are on it or what's going on, so if you can update us, I'd appreciate it, or somebody from that board, okay? I had that asked a couple times this summer. Okay, and then, of course, I'm just going to also tell you about some things that happened at Animal Services, and I'm just going to bring this up, I'm going to read it, because I do better when I read, so I don't go off base, but as you, maybe, probably hardly any of you know, our vet resigned due to our keyboard terrorists. They wrote hateful things on the site where they don't say who actually is on, is the administrator of the site, but citizens have told me it was, again, the same Debbie Glow, Catherine Morningstar, Agatha Montanas, and Debbie Woosley. It's only four people. They have written foul comments about our staff, thus getting followers to threat our vet and employees. The vet has been called all kinds of names, including names that I can't even mention. She has kids and a husband. Staff has been threatened with comments that they were going to be hurt with a weapon just because they work at Animal Services, and these women want us to fail. All of this has been sent to the sheriff, and they are investigating. A few women, who have nothing better to do than see us fail, have made the commission weary of Animal Services, as we all know. I'm asking that you don't stop supporting our staff and their job. There are thousands of volunteers supporting all of the rescues and shelters that are asking you not to. At Tiger Bay Humane Society, Manatee County Bishop had a panel discussion, yet those women came to the meeting and asked the chief questions, which she handled very well. Bishop and Humane said Sarah had the hardest job in this county, as they can, as they can pick what animals they can and cannot take. I met with Sheri and our attorneys during the break about employee threats. As an elected officials, we have, there's nothing really that we can do per attorney. We're elected officials, we come under a different clause, but our employees don't deserve this. Sheri will update you all individually on this as things go further.
Be prepared.
Please, yeah. I will not let four or five women let us fail. I would ask, again, our attorney, when this ordinance is going to be coming up in the future regarding the banning of sales of puppies in retail stores also, because we were working on it, and I'd heard it was going to be sooner than later, but I haven't heard anything, so we, I would like to at least have a target date on that, per what this gentleman, these people said today, that who I never met and didn't know who they were. On a lighter note, I spoke to my husband the other night, and he told me when he came to the United States Embassy to get his green card in Belgium, he was interviewed by the ambassador of Belgium. He was a medical doctor already and came here to do a residency in general surgery and plastic surgery. That person who interviewed him was John Eisenhower, President Eisenhower's son. He asked him three questions, why are you coming? How many judges are in the Supreme Court? And who was president? He was the 45th ambassador to Belgium. So, I thought I ended on a light note. I thought that was kind of cool.
Look on your green sheet on the puppy.
Okay, but I want to get a firm date from our attorney. It's not now, just whenever, when, that'll be coming before us, because you know it'll be a long day, and it probably...
The board may recall that my office was afforded six months to, to come back, to prepare an ordinance and to come back to you, so are you now asking for something short of six months, Commissioner?
No, no, I just want to know when would that be?
October 24th.
When? October 24th. Okay, so it's going to be October 24th, more or less?
Well, I can't say that there's a board meeting on October 24th.
It says six months.
It's on the back of the sheet, is all I'm saying, is...
Right.
Yeah, okay, I didn't look on the back sheet, so tentatively, October 24th, Mickey, then. Okay. Well, it's almost August, so it's not too far away. Okay.
No, but I'm going to have to put up a wall around Mickey, because he's having a rough day.
That's all I have today.
All right, I do have, it's my turn now, Miss. I do have a couple things, more than a couple, actually. I asked a question, but the question was called, but I still need an answer. Do we have, do we have permits for entities like the fire department when they panhandle? Do the fire department have to pull a permit for them to be alongside the road?
And make sure.
Okay, maybe that's something that we need to consider to start in order to support our strategic enforcement, so we'll know who is and who is not allowed to be there. That's just me and my, and my thoughts. I want to say thank you for the forward moving as far as the Somerset Light Project and the progression that is being made. However, I do want to request that we consider the Memphis area to be the next area. I've said that three times, and I'm going to say it until we, I don't know what the next steps are, but I do want to make sure we consider the Memphis area as far as the next for the lighting project, because from what I understand, it's just procedures, some of the funding is already there, and that will be a good thing for us. The question that I have as far as the lighting project, is that something that the CDGB funds take care of? Yes, ma'am?
It cannot pay for the ongoing cost associated with the lighting, but in the past, there have been an instance where an area had qualified for assistance with the equipment with installing the poles and lights. It would have to be an application to the process.
Okay.
It's been done, it's been done at least once before.
All right, and thank you, thank you for that. I'm sure we're all aware of the 2020 census count, and that is coming up. When we spoke earlier about the Gulf Coast Legal in the recap zone, the 2020 census count is very, very important for the recap zone, and the reason why I'm saying that, when I asked them for awareness and information in north of the river, there are significant components of north of the river in both of our districts that are not identified in the recap zone. So, if they are not identified in the recap zone, the Gulf Coast Legal Services cannot support them. And unfortunately, in some, a lot of the areas inside the recap zone, we have elderly people that may be receiving some of those concerns, and they cannot be supported. So, what does that mean? The 2020 census count and our campaign is very, very important, so we can make sure every individual is accounted for, so when the number goes up federally, they can be taken in consideration for the recap zone. When I learned that, I was like, oh, my goodness, this right here is very, very important. So, I want, I want to thank Sheri, because we've already talked about some things that we're going to take and do for the 2020 census count, but I was very discouraged to learn that Gulf Coast Legal had these boundaries, and the boundaries were basically around, you know, areas that they could not, you know, support people because they were not in the recap zone.[1785.51] So we need to take from the 20, in my opinion, unless there's something you all are going to advise me of, we need to take the 2020 census count very, very, very seriously, so every individual can be accounted for. As far as what I have been doing, my PSC Public Safety Council meeting has been going very, very well as far as some of the initiative and the things that we are going to take and make sure we look at. The reentry, the sheriff and the individuals, Captain Ingersoll, have done a great job for the reentry program. And actually, after the port tour tomorrow, I'm actually going, and they're going to take me through that entire process. It's like I'm going to get locked up, and they're going to take me through the whole process as far as reentry, because I'm not going to go to jail. Don't do that. My momma will go crazy, she's watching.
Don't let anybody take pictures.
Right. But I'm excited about that. But from the PSC standpoint, it's three things that we want to start looking at, and that's reentry and mental health, and mental health. We were speaking earlier about the panhandling, and this is why I was kind of talking about the data, because some of those individuals, you know, are legit, and some of those individuals do have mental health issues. Now, how we vet that, I'm not necessarily sure, but if we're going to take ownership and address the panhandling, I think one of the things that we're going to have to consider is some of those individuals that are out there are dealing with some mental health issues. And the Public Safety Council is going to take and look at that, as well as suicide prevention. And we were talking about a suicide prevention awareness campaign. I'm not necessarily sure how that looks, but I do take a note out of her book and want to let you all know that's what we have been working on. In closing, in closing, the next couple of days, what I'll be doing as far as the Port Authority and a tour for reentry, but more importantly, I'm headed to the animal shelter for three hours of volunteer. And the reason why I'm doing that, because I have no idea what the individuals on the ground, the foot soldiers for animal shelter, and what they are experiencing behind the scenes. And what I want to do is see myself, is see myself, some of the things that, some of the things that they're actually encountering, and just so I'll know, just so I know, because right now I'm operating in the blind, but that's what's going on with Commissioner Bellman.
Thank you. Commissioner Trace.
I'm not sure why I got stared at there.
No, it wasn't true. It was a chair.
All right.
Like, are you crazy?
My pig is in good shape. Have a couple of things. Number one, just kind of keep you all up to date. Went to a city Palmetto meeting last night. And actually, there was very good, talking very good about the cooperation between the city of Palmetto and the county, especially about the light at Canal. We've been helping them with FDOT to get the light there. I know Reggie and I both separately have worked extremely hard on that, and they were just saying thank you to the county. And the pool came up, and they were just saying that the communications and everything is pretty good with the county, so just, you know, pretty good report all in all. Had a report that the light at Rutland Road and 301 should be up and running by the end of the year. That's for us that live out that way, that's very, very good news. What are the things out and about during the summer? And since this is piled on the county attorney's day, give him more work to do.
Y'all, I'm going to have to block him. Okay, it's getting out of hand.
There is a ton of those signs on our right aways that end up blown up into, especially on 19, right there at Terracya Bay, in the Palmetto Point area. People put these signs in the right of way, that, you know, they put them on the telephone poles, the realtors that put them in the right of way. Now, the realtors, at least in our area, they seem to pick them up. They put them in Saturday and pick them up Sunday. But I would like the attorney, take three, four months, and that's no hurry on this, look and look and see if anybody has an ordinance that has, because I know we have talked about this in the past, and that there's really nothing that we can kind of do about it. But I was wondering if we were taking it as a water hazard and a, maybe we can do something, but a lot of them are ending up into the bay, and that bothers me. So I would like to make a motion that the county attorney look to see if anyone has an ordinance that has invited to it, that we can do something about these people that are using our public right of way to advertise.
Oh, there, we have an existing code provision that prohibits private signage within road right of way.
So it's nothing but enforcement, then?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Well, well, you know, I'm not going to sit here and cast aspersions at our code enforcement folks, but.
The way I understand, the code enforcement picks them up, and there's like, we have like hundreds and a bunch of them, but they don't find anybody or do anything to them. Other words, they just pick them up.
Sounds like the best enforcement to me. Physically remove the darn things.
Well, my question is, do you keep picking?
I'm not being cheeky.
No, not either. Mine is, is you pick up.
It's a very proactive way of eliminating the problem, is to simply remove the signs.
I agree with that, except if you're picking up the same guy's signs every week.
I mean, I don't know how often our code enforcement folks are out there. I have personally observed them.
So have I.
In the right of way to include state roads, removing privately erected signs.
But I'm asking, is there any way we can get a little bit more, that when you have multiple offenders doing the same thing week in and week out, and our code guys are spending time picking up after them, pulling them out of the bay, is there any way we can actually find them?
Well.
That is, that is what I am asking. If we have the, I know we have the ordinance, I know it's against the law.
Code enforcement violations can result in fines, yes, yes.
And do we have, from what I understand, we do not have any meat on ours that where we can actually find these people, you know?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry, it's a citation procedure, and they have citation books?
All right.
Yes.
I withdraw my motion, but still, it bothers me. All I know is, all I know is from what I've been told, nothing happens, except that we pick them up and we have them, and we hold the signs hostage.
I will.
Yes.
Accept that representation, that our code enforcement folks are not actually issuing citations, even though they have the ability to do so. I guess in some instances, it's difficult to identify who placed the sign there, you know? But, but yeah, I do believe that we've had an active removal program for a number of years.
Yes.
Well, maybe it's only me, but I just, it bothers me that people are advertising on ours illegally, and then we're having to pick them up out of the bay, the ditches, we all, we all see them. It just bothers me.
Get closer to the political season.
Oh, is that not?
Well, I'm not even talking about political signs. I know they're a whole different story, you know, but, you know, if there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do. It just seems to me that we just keep picking up the same thing week in and week out. It bothers me.
I agree. You know, if it's me, I'd like to see where you have a fine that you ratchet up, you know, after they get three violations.
You get a ticket.
Now we're going to start, now we're going to nail them for a thousand bucks, or 5,000, or make it really punitive.
And I know their whole thing is, we don't, well, we didn't tell them to put it there, then, you know, the person that's doing the advertising.
But they're still receiving the advertising and the marketing.
You know, they're somewhat, you know.
I'm sorry.
It's obnoxious a lot, but it, it's also, I don't know, if we go back to the.
Freedom of speech and.
The panhandling and this and that, you know? And then sometimes it's very difficult, at least in my area, to differentiate between what the right of way is and what's private property. And some of these people are pretty good at knowing where the right of way ends and the private property starts when they, especially the realtors.
They do not own the telephone poles.
Yeah, well, I agree, but.
I think it's just, you know, it's a problem. It is a problem. I would just like to see us maybe one day figure out something, but maybe not today. Okay. I withdraw my motion. It sounds like Mr. Palmer has, ordinance wise, under control.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on that before.
So does Commissioner Whitman.
Let me just.
Okay. I think Carol may have made.
Carol, do you have a comment?
Well, mine was something else that I forgot to say. I can do it at the end.
Okay.
If you don't take me off the board. Don't take me.
Take you off. Commissioner Serviette.
Thank you. And Priscilla, thank you for bringing it up, and it's a problem in every district, and it's a big problem in my district as well. And code enforcement, poor code enforcement. You know, we ask them to do so much, and they do get up, I know, 6:30 in the morning and make sweeps and pick them up, et cetera. Now, if you remember our code enforcement workshop, one of the things that we talked about was having code enforcement officers work on the weekend. And what that means is if the board wants more officers, we have to devote more money to that department to get greater enforcement. But we did talk about that, and there are many businesses, many from out of town, many in Tampa, that come down and stick signs in the right of way on the weekend, and some will come back and pick them up if they have enough of them to save money.
Like I said, I was not so much, code enforcement, I think, does a great job, because they pick them up, but they have to keep picking up week after week after week. It just seems to me that we ought to be able to somehow figure out a way to, I like the escalation, you know, you know?
Make it punitive.
I don't know. It's just, it's troublesome, you know, especially this time of year when the wind starts blowing, and they're all over the place.
I agree.
So.
Sherry, did you?
I was just going to respond that it's been a little bit since we've talked about signs and the ordinance and how the staff, how they operate, especially code enforcement. So let me circle back around with them. We can put something down in one of the informational memos. That'll give us an opportunity to look at where we might have an option to do better enforcement, or whether we think that we're, we have other issues. It's good to get comments from them, too, as to what they're up against and why. Well, we'll bring that back to you in the next meeting.
Thank you. I'm done.
Done. Nancy?
Yeah, just.
Miss Jetline?
Yeah. Right, Dad, and I'm sorry about my phone. I was trying to look up, because there was a great documentary I watched on animal shelters on the plane, and I was trying to look up the name of it, and then, of course, something popped up on my phone, and I couldn't get rid of it, so.
You forwarded it to me.
Yes, I will find out the name of it, but I will tell you one of the best lines from this. It was a story about two men that run a shelter and what they have to go through. It was a fabulous, it was an hour and a half long, but I was on a plane for nine hours. It was an hour and a half long thing that talked about all the ins and outs of animals and dealing with them in a shelter. One of the things they complained about is somebody who was a complainer that made a very critical letter to the editor saying, you know, you're a kill shelter, you're a kill shelter, and how dare you have that? He said, well, I put it back on the person who made that, say, okay, you're now the shelter. You now have to take every single animal that gets brought to your house, and you have to accommodate every single animal. And you can't do anything about it other than take care of them. So you're going to get thousands of animals dumped in your driveway, and what are you going to do? How are you going to handle it? He said. And so the lesson in this documentary was, you know, this is a community problem. It's not the shelter's problem.
That's right.
The community has to take the responsibility. And we, this was regarding something that was in South Carolina, and I thought we're doing a better job with spay neuter than apparently they're doing in parts of South Carolina, because that was their big deal. But, you know, I'd be in favor of looking at mandatory spay neuter again. I don't know. I know we have an animal group that has looked at that, but, you know, if that's going to be part of the, part of the solution, then I think we should look at that. I don't remember where we ended up. That was one of the recommendations at one time that a group had, that we looked at mandatory spay neuter. But other communities do that, so. Sherri, do you know, is there anything on that? I remember it was a recommendation of some group, but we've had, you know.
Well, I know that, I know that Manatee Community Foundation provides some monies for an enhanced spay neutering program, and I think all the groups have been working together to kind of fill the gaps. I don't know the status or that previous discussion, but I know that we've basically have allowed that program to be carried out by, you know, other groups at this point. And we, some of those animals that we collect are already spay neutered, right?
Well, they gave statistics on a national level about how many animals that come into shelters, and they also showed the euthanasia.
Euthanasia.
Euthanasia, thank you. I can't think of the word. But they showed what that looked like of these animals, that how many are put to death. And it was just, it was very heartbreaking to see this, what happens. And so they were advocating for that, except for if you're a licensed breeder, except for if you're a licensed breeder, that you would have to have mandatory spay neuter. So something to think about. I won't make a motion, because I don't know where we are on that, but it certainly convinced me watching this, and I will, I will get the link to that. One other issue that I have is, I had an opportunity, sitting at the beauty salon, to talk to a board member of Meals on Wheels Plus. And that board member brought to me a concern about the fact that Meals on Wheels Plus is losing their USDA funding. As of October, they will no longer receive the USDA funding. It will go to Feeding Tampa Bay. And that board member expressed great concern about how this transition is affecting our local food pantries. Well, luckily today at Kiwanis, I got to sit next to Diana Dill, who is an employee with Feeding Tampa Bay. And I said, I'm going to bring this up under board comments, because I'm concerned about our food pantries. You know, food insecurity is a huge issue in this community, and we know it gets reflected in all other kind of problems. We've been told that perhaps grade level reading is affected by food insecurity. That's something new that apparently they're looking into. So I mentioned this to Diana Dill. I said, I'm going to bring that up today. And she said, she said that, yeah, that's true, that they are taking over the federal program and the federal money, and that, yes, there is, there's going to be issues probably for, for our local, you know, food bank, and I've been told it perhaps may have to close. As of October, they're hoping to maybe continue through the end of the year, but they don't know what the future is past that. So I would like to ask staff to just bring us back a report, how this, you know, we aren't in control of this, this is not our job, but it does have an effect on our community and our food pantries. And I understand there was a study done about whether our food pantries are getting, you know, enough food to be able to keep doing what they've been doing. I also had a chance to talk to Susie Bowie from the Community Foundation, and, you know, there's a lot of conversation going on about how, you know, our food pantries and how things are done are a little bit behind the curve in Manatee County. And, you know, maybe that's just the way it is. We have to get with the program. But I would like to understand that, because it is an issue, a community-wide issue. So I would just like to ask ta, sta, staff, task staff, that's what I'm trying to say, would look into this so that we could get a report back.
Commissioners, I've been in on all those conversations, so I'm up to speed with United Way Sun Coast and Manatee Community Foundation. I've probably been to three meetings, contacted by five or six people from both sides. It's a really controversial issue. We're, we have to be cautious that we're not going to be called upon to try to change something that we can't change fully. And so I will put together a report. There is a survey that was completed a couple, two or three months ago. Very contentious meeting between the two entities and some passionate people on both sides, as you're stating. So we'll bring back a report that provides all sides, but it is a community-wide contribution. United Way Sun Coast and Manatee Community Foundation contribute heavily to the food bank as well, so. All right. We'll try, we'll get that back to you within 30 days, hopefully less.
Okay, great. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Missy?
Thank you. Five items? I'm going to go quickly, I promise. So thanks for the discussion on panhandlers. I thought it was wonderful. Just so everybody knows, the city of Bradenton is discussing this topic tomorrow, 8:30 in the morning, and I plan to be there. I am regularly asked about the Cortez Road medians as you get close to the beach. Did you just write that down? So I am asked that probably every six weeks or so, why they look so bad. I've asked staff. I do not recall getting an answer. I may have missed it, so I don't want to say they didn't answer. I don't recall getting an answer. And there's been confusion, whether it's DOT's responsibility, whether, whether it's the county's responsibility. And my understanding today is that it's the county's responsibility. But I would just like some more information on that. Um, there's, they draw a distinction, the people who contact me, between Manatee Avenue and what that looks like versus Cortez. And there's a desire to improve the landscaping in those medians. Um, okay, item number three, LDC. Um, I, I would like to suggest that we schedule a workshop on the LDC. Don't hate me. But I think that we need to really focus and prioritize what do we need done as far as amending the LDC? And when should it be done? And then I'd like to see this board really set the pace for regular amendments to that very dynamic document. Because, um, I think, you know, after getting a briefing from the county attorney this week on a matter, there, there are a lot of problems that could be avoided if we could just clarify our language in the code. And some things are more important than other things. So I know everybody's working on the code, but I just, I'd like to really, um, light a fire under it and, and change the pace so that we can maybe bring little chunks forward at a faster pace and get this done. Just my comments. I'm not asking you for any motion. Uh, item number four, my citizens coalition on growth met on the 19th of this month. Just so you know, many of you know Ramona Lewis. She's on the coalition. She turned 80 last week.
Oh, really?
So just, I just want you to know. She's such an important member of the community. And she's 80 years old and she's still serving the public.
And her sister, huh?
Yeah, her sister is having health issues, but Ramona is, is still out there. Um, so we had a speaker at the coalition from Shady Brook. And for those of you who don't know, the management at Shady Brook has taken a very proactive approach on FEMA issues and preventing the flooding that they suffered from a couple of years ago. And they have found that every FEMA policy issued, every flood policy, excuse me, issued, has some small print that says, "If you have a policy, you are entitled to $1,000 from FEMA for preventive and proactive flood prevention," per policy. So in Shady Brook, I think they have about 51 homeowners and policies, so they're eligible for $51,000. And they have plans for that money to buy a bladder, to protect their property. And that's good and bad. There's a lot of questions with that, mainly good. Um, but they've actually gone to the FEMA conference in DC and been talking with people in Washington about clarifying this so that the nation understands it. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you'd like a presentation, I can put you in touch with the people I've been talking to. But it was fascinating, uh, information. Very helpful. And then my last item is to ask about the sexually oriented businesses. I saw on the back of our, um, green revised agenda that there was a meeting on June 24th with Manatee County Sheriff's Office. And I just would like an update. It doesn't have to be now, it could be later, as to where we are with that. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. I think I'm gonna let Betsy respond to your Cortez Road FDOT.
No, I don't know.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
She was pointing at me.
No, I've looked at that a lot. And, and there's a issue there, you know, the county's responsible because we have an agreement with FDOT that was signed-
Maintain it.
-25 years ago, I think, to maintain that. And then the problem came in that our good friends at FPNL keep deciding to put new light fixtures in so they tear up the medians as, as they've done on El Conquistador Parkway for the last six months. And just the other day, as an example, we've finally gotten, moved forward on the Parkway at El Con, irrigation was put in. And then who shows up two weeks later? About a whole, six whole big FPNL trucks running over all the new irrigation pipes that have just been put in. You know, and I'm like, "Oh, you've got to be kidding me." You know, I talked to the FPNL, "Well, all done. We've put in the new poles, everything is great." And then all of a sudden, bang, they show up again and trash all the work, you know, that we've just done. But, you know, Cortez, that, that's been a coordination problem with the, um, the county and FDOT. And, and then Keep Manatee Beautiful has been involved in it as well. They have picked up, picked out a lot of the different, um, shrubbery that they plan on putting in there. And I think it's, last I had time, I talked, I believe, with Chad, the resolution was that they are moving forward on getting that. But they constantly are running into some issues as FDOT continues to work on that whole power grid out there because of the influx of Lake Florries along with, um, Aqua by the bay. So, you know, it's, uh, but it, you know, it is an unattractive looking area. And there is a, an agreement in place from what, I've seen the agreement, you know, where, you know, FDOT says, you know, "We'll pay you, but you have to, you know-"
Pay it.
"- maintain it," type of thing. And so I think it's in the works and, uh, you know, I'll, I'll check again with Chad. You know, like I said, I'm still working after two and a half years on my ElCon median, you know? And you, meanwhile, get the great Bay Shore Gardens one, and I get 40 phone calls from everybody at ElCon going, "How come Bay Shore Gardens got all these nice medians?"
Because the irrigation was there.
You know, well, yeah, but the county paid for all, you know, but I mean, it's, you know, but they look great, you know? And I think when they ultimately get the ElCon ones done, you know, that's gonna be a, you know, huge improvement there. They're not gonna look like Bay Shore, but at least, you know, thanks to Keep Manatee and the Tree Trust Fund, you know, we've got enough money to, you know, start the process. And then I think the residents need to step up after that and start contributing to the maintaining or, you know, trying to put smaller little plants in or whatever they want to do. And, uh, and I'm hoping that that experiment on Bay Shore Gardens Parkway is successful, you know? They've all, from the staff level, they all say, "Well, it's there, but we don't know what it's gonna look like come December," you know, type of thing. Because they just don't know, you know, between the amount of traffic and what they planted, they're like, "Let's hope they all stay alive and flourish and, you know, and they don't all crap out on us again," if you will, so, but, um...
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, so I understand. So F, the conflict with FPL is because, are they putting light poles in the medians?
Yes.
Well, they're putting light poles in the medians. Okay. And, um, do we have irrigation in the medians?
On the Cortez?
In Cortez?
My, they have some drip, drip, is that the right word? Drip irrigation that's very, very old and probably is gonna need to be totally-
Yes.
-be done.
So it's not-
It's not gonna be able to be-
It's not adequate.
-vitalized if you renovate the stuff that was there.
And as I think about why Manatee looks so much better than Cortez, I think it's because a lot of that's in the city. And I sit on the city's tree board, so I should know that we have funding to plant trees in the city of Bradenton. It's probably why it looks better there.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And I think our tree fund is now depleted. I don't think we have any money left in the tree fund for Manatee County.
Based on what was done today, that was the end of it.
End of it.
For now.
Yeah, we killed it today.
Thanks Charlie.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you.
Vanessa?
Yeah. Would you pass those?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I've just got one topic really, but it's probably gonna take a few minutes, so bear with me. Carol, you mentioned the Water Committee, and it's funny, I was gonna bring it up today.
Thank you.
So, um, I think that there were some commissioners that were actually in the last meeting, or at least part of the last meeting that we had, uh, I think we were in Orlando with FAC. Just to give you a short synopsis of that, um, we are at this point coming together on how we want to tackle the needs of the state as a whole. I cannot approach something that's only good for Manatee, it's for the entire state. We are going to be looking at a budget that we're requesting, uh, for this committee so that, um, in the future, we'll be able to actually take some projects and get some work done. However, that being said, I just passed out the memorandum that we had received from a meeting that Commissioner Benak had, and it was awesome. I mean, when I look at the people that were invited to this meeting or attended the meeting, whatever the case may be, and the, the, um, uh, the items that were discussed, it kind of led the door for me to open the discussion that I feel we need to have on this board. I have sent a few, um, articles recently to all of you about problems down in the Keys, problems, uh, with the blue-green algae that so many different areas are seeing. Um, I can tell you that yesterday, there was an email from Representative Fine. I believe he's in Melbourne, I believe, as I recall. But anyway, their water supply now has blue-green algae. It's funny, you know, you sit back and a lot of people say, "Well, you know, that's not uncommon. We get that every year." Uh, no, we don't get it every year like we're having it this year. It is a problem. We are going to be seeing more and more of it. It is generally caused by nutrients such as nitrogen. Uh, we all know and have ideas where a lot of this is coming from. And interestingly enough, uh, you know, this memorandum that I, I pointed out to all of you really does get into the, the thicker things on nitrogen. It is a subject that this board is gonna have to, um, tackle. And it's gonna take, um, I think, the developers working together with Manatee County to find some solutions to try and help, um, some of the, um, things that are getting into the watersheds that is helping these algies to grow. We all know what causes it. It is no secret. It's just, it's such a big issue that no one's really sure how to start tackling the pro- the problem. We're very fortunate here in Manatee County. You know, we have a great system in place already with our sewer. We do have stormwater issues. We're tackling that. We're looking at it here in Manatee. We're doing the right thing. We're looking at what solutions we can come up with to solve or at least help. We'll never get it totally under control, but anything we can do to help. Part of the problem, of course, with a lot of this isn't because of Manatee County, it's from other counties that are near us. Uh, you know, you hear about, as well as I do, the different, uh, sewer leaks that come up. I mean, we, we've got them north of us and we've got them south of us. And, you know, it is an issue that Governor, excuse me, Senator Gruders tried to tackle this last year, um, to come up with some solutions. And I believe he's gonna be bringing that bill back up this year again. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get some traction on it. But we're, we're gonna have to look at these issues and, and make some really tough decisions. And, and I'm really hoping that, uh, the developers that build beautiful homes in this area and, and commercial properties as well will be able to work with us to come up with some solutions to help this problem. We've got to get some of the, uh, nitrogen and so forth and phospho- phosphorus. We've got to get it under control. At least do a better job. So I just wanted to bring it up because this memorandum was, I thought, so on point. And I, I requested yesterday in, in my briefing that I believe this meeting that was held, that I'm jealous that Betsy had this meeting with so many others, I think this entire board needs to have a workshop immediately with these people and go over the same topics so that we can have an intelligent conversation on how to cover some of these issues in our county. It's not going to solve the problem if it's just in Manatee. We're gonna have to get a lot of the state involved. And the state, the different counties are gonna have to make some changes. And I can tell you, that's one thing that the Water Committee is looking at. Also, the, the new chairman of FAC, Nick Maddox, I work with him, he's the chairman also of the MPOAC. And, um, he's asked me if I would be on the Policy Committee for the Federal Committee. And I'll be going to the White House in October, uh, for another meeting. And it's things like that, you know, it's gonna take federal assistance, it's gonna take state assistance to really get this issue under control. It's not something that just the counties can do. There's grants that I think need to be, we have grants on the state level for local governments. Um, we talked about that in our last Water Committee meeting. I, Betsy, I don't know if you were still there when that was discussed. But, you know, the thing is, is that the state and federal governments are realizing that it's not just red tide. It's not just a red tide problem. Unfortunately, um, I mean, you're even talking about, you know, the Mississippi River where it comes out into the Gulf, and you got a dead zone. Um, you know, there's many, many issues. And it's gonna take every county in the state of Florida to tackle this problem. But we have a responsibility to our residents here to make it the best it can be. So I'm glad that Misty brought up the LDC. I was gonna bring it up. I think we all had briefings yesterday, uh, on that. And I think there are some, um, I don't know, I, I really, you know, Betsy, you're more in line and you and Misty on this than I am, but it seems to me that there's a lot of things that we do need to look at in the LDC. We need to make some changes and not do business as usual, but look to see what we can do for stormwater to help what's getting into our watersheds. Um, and, and the other thing that I would mention is, when I'm finishing this up, no, I'm not gonna make a motion of any sort at this point. And I, I did ask that, uh, the administrator get a workshop together ASAP for us on this memorandum. But, you know, stormwater, we have a serious issue in, in this county on stormwater. It is something that we need to move forward as soon as possible. And now we're in hurricane season, we're in the rainy season, a lot of our, uh, areas are starting to get a lot of water in them. Uh, and so, you know, you know and I know, last year it was a major problem with some flooding. All we need is a good tropical storm to come through, and we're back in the thick of things. So, um, these are issues that, to me, seem that, you know, it's not something we're gonna be able to wait too awfully long on to make some decisions. The last thing I want to see is Center Lake or Palm Air or Tara getting any more flooding like we did last year. So, um, you know, as I said, I'm hoping that the commission, uh, you know, will take into consideration what I'm saying and, and try to make some, uh, meetings come up where we can make some decisions fairly quickly. Thank you. That's it.
Fun.
Yes. Told you it was a while.
I think has some comments?
Yeah. Um, thank you. I, I did, um, send an email to Tom. I told him I thought this was an excellent summary. And he, he said, "Thank you." He said, "But it was a group effort." And I will tell you this, and I, I'm sure I've told you guys before, how this meeting came about because I was at a FEMA workshop at the Convention Center, and I ran into Dennis Ragosta, I'm probably not saying his name right, from Swift Mud. And we were talking about flooding issues and, um, you know, what, what kind of changes were coming with FEMA. And I asked him, "Well, what about stormwater? Are there new stormwater standards? Is there something Manatee County's missing?" I said, "I really want to know. Is there something that other communities are doing that we're not doing, that maybe we should be doing?" I said, "You know, I, I worked for an engineering company for 17 years, and we did stormwater compliance plans. And, you know, we met the regulations, but is there something that maybe we should be doing that's, you know, above the regulations?" And so he agreed to do a meeting, and I told, um, Tom that we were gonna have a meeting, and then all these people showed up. And I thought it was really cool. We had a lot of discussion, but we didn't come to, and I, I would tell you, the Swift Mud people were, "Oh, no, you're doing, you're doing exactly what you're supposed to do and you're doing more." So they kept saying, "We're doing more." But I thought, "Okay, well, I know what we're doing more. We're doing the additional treatment in the watersheds and stuff." But, I mean, they're, and, you know, we tired of talking about LID, and a lot of that stuff is in here. And then there was discussion about how LID is a low-impact design. For you guys who don't know what LID is, whether or not that's working. And so they, we were kind of all over the place. I really appreciated him putting this together. But that, to me, is the real question. I mean, is there something that we should be doing that's more? And I, and I get it, I work, my clients were those developers, and they met the standards, you know, and they meet our standards. But if we're talking about higher standards, they need to be part of the discussion. Because it's gonna be-
Exactly right.
-cost more, but our water quality, to me, is worth it. Our water quality's worth it. So that's what I was trying to get at, is there something, I mean, I'm not an engineer. I don't know if there's something we should be doing more. And I know that every commissioner up here has basically said something similar. I know Priscilla's said it out in her district because that's where a lot of the growth is occurring, in a lot of areas that are more challenging to develop, quite frankly, because they were areas that historically were floodplains. We're seeing a lot more of that. You know, we're trying to, places like, um, Shady Brook and, uh, and-
Center Lake.
-Center Lake, they got developed, not because they weren't consistent with the standards, it's because the standards were different. The floodplain maps were different. They were changed after that, and they were put in floodplains where they weren't before, or had higher, um, requirements for, um, floor elevations because of changes. So, you know, and we know things are changing in the environment, just as a fact. So I, I do look forward to continuing this discussion, what we can do. It's gotta be a community discussion, but it is something we need to move forward on. And, and yeah, it's not just us, it's the state, it's the feds. But we need to continue to have this discussion because, you know, even some of the, you, I saw some of the articles we all got sent about what's gonna happen with sea level rise and the cost to build these seawalls. And it's just like, the whole thing is just-
Like seawalls.
It's just hard to comprehend how, how we can do that. But I do think from a stormwater perspective, especially since we're looking at funding, some of the maintenance issues with stormwater and, and doing it on a countywide basis, it, it could change the costs associated with it. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Vanessa. I, I know that the FAC committee, I think that, the committee you're on is a FAC committee, right? It's-
Yeah, it was designated by the governor.
Okay. And that that's, um, you know, that's, that's been really interesting to hear how other places are doing it. But, um, and I, again, we're not alone in this, and so we need to know, um, what our opportunities are to, to make things a little bit better for our community. are to make things a little bit better for our community. Water quality is where it's at. And, you know, we don't have water quality in this community or in this state, we're going to be in big trouble. So, if you're done, I had a couple things that I, one thing I forgot to mention.
Can I mention dialogue with her on?
Okay, yeah.
I'm still for my other thing, but I wanted to dialogue with Vanessa's, is that okay?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, again, we're back to, we've got a state-formed Water Board.
Several.
Well, the one that the FAC put on, that the Governor, that's the one you're on, okay. What are their goals? Is it education? Is it to get federal funding? You know, the state passed a law that we can't change our fertilizer ordinance anymore, wanted to put a sign in the retail stores that we're, you know, during the summer, you don't fertilize on your local lawns, we can't do that, because the state had passed a law that we can't after we, we're grandfathered in. But the state had made rules that we couldn't do things to limit nitrogen runoff and stuff like that. So, is that, because I couldn't, there was no room in that room, it was very, they only had like 12 seats, and the whole room was full of board members. And so, I went to another conference, I know two or three of you stayed at it. But what is their goal? Do you know, Vanessa? I mean, are they, what is it?
Well, as I said, we're putting our priorities together now.
There is none yet.
And so, we will be discussing that probably within the next 30 days.
Okay.
As to what they are. But again, I need to point out, you know, like, I have submitted a couple of things, but it's not something just primarily for Manatee County.
I'm not thinking of Manatee.
Yeah, but I need, you know, I need the Board to know that I, it's, you know, for the state. But we are looking at that. And yes, we will have a budget, I don't know what it is yet, but we will have a budget to work with, to be able to, you know, maybe we need to go to DC more often, you know, for meetings or whatever. I don't know what all the case may be, but they are looking into making this a committee with some teeth. Now, I do believe, you know, Tallahassee, I'm probably going to regret saying this, but I think that Tallahassee in some ways, you know, they want to make some changes, they want to help things as they are, they realize the issues. But you've got to remember too, you've got a lot of counties out there, north and south of us, who have so many septic tanks, and primarily are always, every day, every time a new residence gets approved, it's with a septic tank, because they don't really have sewer lines. So, I think the city of Sarasota, I think it's like $300 million that they're looking at, to be able to redo their sewer system. So, it's a very, very expensive venture for some counties, not so much us. I think, I checked with Public Works before recess, and they said that they believe we have approximately only 4,000 or so septic tanks in Manatee County. So, we're in a lot better shape as far as that goes. But then you get into your stormwater ponds and the maintenance of them, they're not really maintained. And you've got some out there that are years and years old, that have not really had the proper maintenance that they need to make sure that, you know, the water is really draining the way it should. There's a lot of work out there, even in Manatee, that we can do, but we're not hit, I don't think it will cost us near the millions of dollars that, you know, other counties are looking at. So, it's a major issue with the state, because, you know, there are so many counties in worse shape than we are, and it's going to cost so many more millions of dollars. So, it's going to be something that it's going to take a long time to get done. But like I said, I think in Manatee, I had a meeting yesterday with Charlie Hunsecker and Rob Brown and a gentleman that used to be at Moat. And one thing that I would mention, that I think we all need to get familiar with, is the Clean Water Act. I think it was finally perhaps realized in 2010, from what I heard yesterday. And there's a lot of things in that that are guidelines that we can use to tackle clean water, you know, things that we can do. You know, so I'm going to get a copy of that, because I'm not familiar with it, and I'm going to send it to all the board members on the committee that I sit on. So, there's a lot of things out there, it's a lot of things yet that I'm not familiar with, I'm just now really kind of getting my teeth into it. But I can tell you that Charlie and Rob were wonderful yesterday on their knowledge and things that they feel we can do that might help us, at least if we can cut back how much we're contributing to the problem. And then we'll probably, you know, have to look at the state and the federal government. And I can tell you, I've had that conversation with Bill Galvano, and I've had it with Congressman Buchanan. I'm looking forward to going up to DC and talking with, oops, Senator Scott, not Governor Scott, and, you know, Senator Rubio too. And I want to talk to Congressman Stupi, you know, all of our local delegation, because we've really got to tackle this. So, anyway, and yes, Betsy, you mentioned sea level rising, you know, it's definitely, it's rising. And it could be millions of dollars that it takes, you know, over a wide span, many, many years. But the thing of it is, if we don't start now, and it's not all seawalls, a lot of it is just being able to plant the proper plants along the coastline to help, you know, with some of it. So, there's a lot out there to read, there's a lot of information that even our staff, who has been very involved in it, has. And we just need, as a board, to start having meetings on some of this and make decisions on how we move forward, which is not an easy task. So, I hope I answered Carol your questions that you had.
Monsieur Servia.
Yes, thank you, great information, Vanessa, I really appreciate it. And I'm reminded that on Sunday night, I don't know if any of you watched 60 Minutes, but there was, did you see the story about the guy in the Netherlands and what they're doing?
Huge.
For those of you, oh, you have seen it, okay. So, that's nothing at the county level that we can handle, but it is so interesting, the sophisticated approach that they're taking to urban planning and planning for the future and, you know, sea level rise incorporated into water quality and flooding and all of those issues. They are kind of diametrically opposed to what FEMA does, which is repair and rehabilitate and rebuild units that are destroyed in floods. They're putting all their money, billions of dollars, into preventing floods. So, I hope when you're in Washington, that you can have a talk with all of our.
Yeah, I think you're going to be there with me, from what I gather, so.
Yes, I will be there. So, I hope we have that opportunity. Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Johnson, just to add one more thing. You know, talking about sea level rise, this is not a new issue. I mean, this has been, you know, coming along now for many years, and I can remember before I ever ran for County Commission, Rex Jensen at SMR and Pam Truitt were on a panel together out east about sea level rise. So, you know, this is something that's been around for a long, long time, long time.
Commissioner Banack.
If you guys are still talking about this issue, I had two different things that I wanted to make sure I brought up. One was the obituary for Dick Wilford. Many of us knew Mr. Wilford.
He passed.
Who, yeah, who passed on. Mr. Wilford was the long, long time Public Works Director here at Manatee County. I will tell you, back in the day, I used to say, "He was the number-one planner in Manatee County," because he said where the utilities were going to go. So, and he would, after I got elected, he would call me and say, "Betsy, what are you going to do about all those fees they keep adding on to our utility system?" You know, he couldn't stand the fact that our, you know, that the solid waste fees were part of it. I don't think he liked the stormwater stuff either, he just said, "That's, what are you going to do about that?" And I said, "Well, you know, we're looking at it, but we really have to have a funding source, Mr. Wilford." So, I'm sorry that he passed away before you could see, at least that we got to the point where we're talking about a stormwater fee, because he was, he was a strong advocate for protecting the utility system and is, you know, largely responsible for, we're working with the boards before us to make sure that we did have the utility system we have, which is kind of a little bit the envy of some of our neighbors, you know? We have a strong utility system that provides wastewater treatment because of people like Mr. Wilford and our previous board, so just want to give him a shout out. And Reggie, when you were talking about the Public Safety Coordinating Commission, I remember that presentation that I went to, where, and I'm going to probably screw this up, but the Black Officers Association of Florida brought forward a program that they do with youth to teach them how to interact with police. I think I gave you that information. I just would hope we could follow up with that at some point.
I met with a lawyer on that last week. She actually came to Representative Wingate's Farm Market share.
Okay.
And we have an appointment, I think, Friday at 2:00, where her and I are going to look at that and bring it to the community.
Yeah, I just thought it was such a cool program that kids could definitely benefit from understand, you know, what kind of things they're going to run into, and I just thought it was such a great.
It's the know-the-law.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's the know-the-law, and her name is Dominique Mancy. And I was supposed to meet with her, I was supposed to meet with her on Friday at 2:00.
Okay, great.
And that to the community.
Okay, thank you. Those are the things I remembered after the fact.
Okay, Carol?
I'm sorry, I forgot to bring this up. Much to my dismay, my city has the tag recognition, the cameras, so every time you go in the city, you get a picture of your tag, which I adamantly oppose. But the chief and I, I sent it to you all during break.
I saw it.
The Chief of Police of Home Speech, and this is just, 4th of July weekend, Manatee, I mean, you hear from all of us all the time that it's rough out there, Manatee Avenue Bridge, not Cortez, because Bradenton Beach does not have the camera. Manatee Avenue Bridge from the 4th through the 7th had 324,000 cars go over that bridge. That's just on one bridge, not two. And I actually was speaking to Sherri last night, and I said, "You know, we always say, you know, it's rough out there, you know, don't forget the infrastructure that we're supporting our number-one destination, and you got the data to kind of prove it." I mean, this is probably half of it compared to what Cortez did. So, and it was a very rough weekend, a couple days we just couldn't even leave the house. But here, this is why I was surprised that you brought up the Cortez, because Sherri and I talked about this last night. Manatee Avenue has the causeway. So, the majority of the time, the way you're going to the island is the causeway, and then the city of Bradenton has the rest, like Misty said. Cortez Road is another animal, and we've been working on this for years. Yes, F-Dog gave us the trees, and we committed to maintain them. Throughout the last few years, and I'm sure it's Tajet, that's probably sent you an email, she's the one that sends them to me all the time, and actually, Chad has had to let go a couple land companies to maintain them. It's all about the money. These are the number-one destinations of this county, whether we all want to believe it or not, it is. We got the data to prove it for one weekend, if we had it on the other camera, we'd probably be close to like, you know, a couple, I mean, we'd probably be close to 600, 700,000 people. So, I was talking to her last night, to Sherri, about, you know, what about tourism funds, and what about Southwest Tiff District? Because this is a big part of that area, and this is part of that. So, in the future, it's, we get what we pay for. If we're paying the guys to put a few plants and mow the grass, that's what we get for. And this is the entrance way to our number-one destination. So, I actually told her I was going to bring it up, and I forgot. So, could we please consider something, a funding source that will advertise our number-one destination in Manatee County? And if we got, we've got the data to prove it. I mean, and this is just one hat, one bridge. And this is only the 4th through the 7th. And for those of you that didn't live out there, people took off the day before the 4th, and they took off past the 7th. I mean, it was a very, very rough week. Yesterday, I was telling somebody at lunch, because you can't talk about work, across from Home Speech City Hall, they have a new place called Ugly Gruber. Every day this week, or last week, because I've been coming home at different times since we didn't have to work. Packed to a brim. I mean, a baseball player owns it. He bought two or three businesses next to it on the island for parking only, packed to the brim. And where are all these people coming from? Manatee County, 4th of July, probably. They're coming from, you know, all over the state, visitors. But the infrastructure is tired, you're like Kevin said earlier, that West Bradenton is getting a little tired. The islands, they're doing what they can, but I think with us maintaining our entrance way to our number-one destination, we should really look into that. And also, I hope somebody will talk in the very near future about the horses on the causeway.
Yeah.
We need to address that.
Yeah.
Talk about water quality. I have people griping at me, it takes 22 days to cycle the water in the Palmasola Bay, because it's like a bowl. It's not like everything else. And that's where we've always had beach closings, as far as any of us can remember. We've got to address that. I don't think that's our jurisdiction, I think it's the city of Bradenton.
The city of Bradenton.
But again, when we have our beating, can we, can I ask to have that on the agenda, maybe? It's nothing personal, it's just, unless they can put something on the horses that they can catch it in the water, go for it. I would think we should talk about it. So, if, Mr. Chair, if you would consider about discussion of horses on the causeway. And people will die, but, you know, we also got the dogs. I've never had a problem with that, but, you know, and people that don't even bother to go across the street to the restroom, and God knows what they're doing in the bay. So, it's a major issue, we should put it all upon ourselves, too. Had a lot of people giving us grief during this blue-green algae, and a few of them are charter captains, or they take people out, and I said, "So, where do you tell your customers to go? You know, you're out there 10 miles out, what do you think?" So, it's all on all of us. So, anyway, sorry I got off on a tangent.
If I need, you know, just, you know, build on what you were saying about the entrance ways and the Southwest Tiff, you know, I think we need to do a work session or come back and revisit that whole Southwest Tiff, you know, that thing just keeps accumulating money, lots of money, and talking to the.
We have a plan for it, though.
Which is amazing.
We have a plan for it.
Yeah, not really. We're always talking about, we're waiting for this one big deal, so we have a big amount of money that we can throw at it, you know. Meanwhile, you know, I don't know what it's up to now, maybe 16, 17 million, you know, the biggest increase this year, you know, with our tax dollars is going into that thing. And I'm like, you know, maybe we need to look at a lot of little deals, you know, type of thing, because I don't know where we're going to do a big deal. I'd love to, especially in the affordable housing area, you know, and do something with, you know, down maybe on, you know, the 41 area or, but I think, you know, we're limited, I think, from what I've been told, you know, under that, under the parameters of the Tiff, and maybe it's time to go back and look at those parameters and expand them, you know, to do some of the stuff that we want to do with this money that keeps, you know, accumulating in there and, you know, and just give us some more flexibility to use it, because that area is, I think that, you know, the values are really going up. When you look at Bay Shore Gardens, it's amazing, you know, those houses have almost doubled in value in the last eight years. I mean, it's, you know, they've got, we've got all those new sidewalks we've put in, like I say, we cleaned up the medians, and that does add value, you know, to property, a lot, you know, type of thing. So, you know, I, you know, I'm not going to make a motion, but I can't, but I mean, I think it's something that we should visit again sometime in the next, you know, six months as to, hey, what is this money, and what can we possibly do, or at least expand the scope of what we could use it for, if you will.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I don't disagree with that. And just like the LDC, I think that we should plan a schedule for regular updates on that Tiff money. We've talked about using some of it for additional code enforcement officers. I know that was a little bit unresolved, and there was some more investigation that needed to take place, but that is another living, breathing, strategic plan that can't just be looked at once a year and set on a shelf. It really does need, I think, constant attention.
I think Sherri would chip in.
Just a reminder that you do have, yes, you do have a plan, and you have adopted a series of strategic areas with percentages put in them. We'll get it scheduled back again so you can see it, but it was, it's been presented a couple times in the last 12 months. I think all the things that you've mentioned, though, are things that we've talked about, the gateways, you know, and those types of things that Ms. Lopez and her group have, about five areas, I believe, that address the current ordinance, so we'll schedule it to come back and talk. It's part of your, it's part of your annual budget, it's in your budget, and we will, we will, you know, remind you of what those things are, so you can have a discussion about them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Banack.
Yeah, and I would hope that we would look at stormwater treatment opportunities in that Southwest Tiff, because a lot of it was developed.
Yeah.
Prior to.
Great idea, yeah.
The standards being, and how you could create some open space and some public space and some park area. I mean, I've been saying that all along, but it's going to take some land, and, you know, the longer we wait, the more expensive land, which was great. I mean, that was the design, that was the idea, right? Increase the values. So, but we're, we need to take a look at that and see, because there are tired areas that might be opportunities to create some stormwater treatment, and with some of that funding, it might be a real improvement, and.
It just increases the value of the property.
And we could partner with Swift Mud, and I talked to the guy, the swim project manager, when he left, and he said, "We're always looking for land." He said, "We can't buy the land, but if the county can come up with the land, we can help partner with the program to do water improvement projects." So, I think that's something we need to focus on in that area.
Commissioner Ball?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm good.
I think I got everybody. Mr. Palmer, you've had such a lovely day, do you have any comments?
I honestly feel bad for him today.
I honestly feel bad for him today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to supplement Commissioner Banack's commentary regarding Dick Wilford. You know, he really, Dick really was, I think that history will look upon him as a major figure in the history of this county. You know, he was, he was with the county for fifteen years. He was a government employee for his entire career, to include initially in the state of Iowa, where he was a public director, works director, I believe, in Cedar Rapids or Des Moines, anyway. But, yeah, he was the public works director here, but that was part, a large percentage of that time was when Public Works was an uber department to include both utilities and highway. Dick Wilford headed up a department, the, you know, the employees of which probably consisted of, I don't know, seventy percent of this county's workforce. You know, and I had the pleasure of working with Dick for approximately seven years during his fifteen-year tenure with the county. And it was at a time when I was a young assistant county attorney assigned to the utilities department. And, you know, Dick approached every task in a bulldog-ish kind of way. Even though he was a government employee for his entire career, he had very little patience for bureaucracy. You know, and you talk about eliminating septic tanks in this county, Dick Wilford was a major player in that. When I first came on in nineteen eighty-seven as a young assistant county attorney, we were in the midst of administering a large EPA grant program, money that's no longer available, but a large EPA grant program to decommission thousands of septic tanks within this community and extend our central sewer system, and Dick headed up that process. I feel a debt of gratitude to Dick because I learned a ton of stuff. My very first civil jury trial, you know, involved our utilities department and a situation where Dick drew a line in the sand and said, "No, Mr. Contractor, you're not, you're not gonna get any more money from the county. Sue us." That's what the contractor did. We went to trial and got a good result. I remember him once turning to me in yet another trial, we were both seated at council's table, and he turned to me and said, "Mickey, how much do you make?" And I quoted my annual salary to him, and he said, "My God, you're worth three times that." And Dick was serious. I mean, every time, you know, I've had the opportunity approximately half a dozen times in the course of the last year and a half to lunch with Dick. Myself, Mike Gore, Dan Gray, John Zimmerman, we've had a large group of people. Mark Simpson has joined us. We've had a large group of people that have met up with Dick for lunch about half a dozen times in the course of the last year and a half. I had previously lost contact with him for many years. The last time we got together was, I believe, in December of last year, and Dick was not well.
Yeah.
Dick was not well, and we knew, we knew the time was near. And so, you know, I mean, he accomplished so much. I'm looking here at the list of accomplishments, you know, major improvements to the Lena Road landfill, the acquisition of the Duette Preserve, the emergency spillway at Lake Manatee Dam, the East County Well Field, the list goes on and on. And I had the pleasure of working directly with Dick on so many of those projects, and, you know, he will, he was a major figure in the history of this government. May he rest in peace.
Yeah. Good friend of Pat Glass's, too.
Yeah, I just was, funny, I did not know Mr. Wilford, and I'm sorry to say, but in looking at the obituary that was handed to me, the one thing that stands out to me besides the accomplishments, which are many, as Mickey said, I have to say, obviously, he had a funny side to him. It says, "He will be remembered for his funny, practical jokes, his zest for life, his love of country and civic duty, his fearsome stance against stupidity." I love it. And his vast visions in all aspects of life. And I can tell you that, believe it or not, since he's passed away, I have heard some stories when he worked here at the county about his relationships with the county commission. And I just wish I could look back at some of those meetings and-
The stories are legendary. He had some ups and downs with the county commission, but Dick always had the best interests of the community at heart, and-
He sounds like he was a wonderful person.
I will always respect him for that.
Sherri, anything?
Well, I got to work with Dick Wilford two, five years. He was still here, and everything that's said is true. Can remember walking into the county administrator's area and you, whatever he said, that's what you were doing. But, but the thing I think I'd mentioned, you know, as part of his legacy is, many of the people that you've mentioned that, that worked under him are still with us and guiding a lot of your water, wastewater, environmental issues. And so, I think it's just a reminder of how, how intelligent those folks are. They got trained by the very best, and they've carried on a great tradition from learning. So, I'd say we got some pretty awesome people in our organization, but a really great guy. I wanted to mention that, you know, you're talking about the medians, and I would say, if you just think about the Fourteenth Street West medians, the ones that are down by the Lowes and across from Shepherd's Tire, those have been a thorn in our side since the day they were put in. One of the main reasons, those were in the Fourteenth Street West CRA, and I did not have the, the time was before me of where those were put together, but they were meant to be what's called a zero scape landscaping, no water. And that's our problem a lot of places, as you guys mentioned, irrigation, not having irrigation, having to send staff around with watering trucks with the kind of traffic that goes on. It's, it's pretty much a life or death situation. But the difference, as Commissioner Servia said, with the experiments down in Bay Shore is, we've got some water down there. So, we, you know, that's a biggie we need to keep in mind. We've been, we work back and forth with FDOT, but your district in the Fourteenth Street manages those medians. They put everything in. We didn't spend any money putting anything in. An arborist helped to decide what would, to be put there that might be drought resistant, but with the traffic, it's proved not to be very easy. And so, we gotta learn from our mistakes there. The Gulf Coast Legal Services, I'd mentioned, you know, it brings to mind when organizations come before you that not every organization is the right fit for the, for certain kinds of money. And if there's only one source of money, and that's the one they're going for, I think, as many of you mentioned, it's really hard to deviate off of federal requirements. So, we have a lot of organizations, and I think you're gonna see some of them because it's, when August comes up, you get your nonprofit agencies back in here where we have not had the opportunity to be able to provide larger grants in the past, and you're gonna find some that just can't, they can't meet the criteria of what the funds are set for. So, it's, I think that's what also has happened to Gulf Coast, is it's a good organization, and they do good work, but being locked into a certain kind of money for a specific thing sometimes isn't as successful to them. And I updated all of you, thank you for letting me update you yesterday at our briefings on what we did while the recess was in place and what we have planned for August on your calendar. And a lot of talk today about stormwater, water quality reminds me that on August thirteenth, for those watching, there's a wastewater treatment work session in the morning, just after the utilities department presents their budget. And then on September seventeenth is the next stormwater discussion. So, we're, I think we're right into the timeframe where water quality, as staff will work on putting all of that together. So, I mean, let's get ready for the next three months. We're gonna be talking about water quality.
What was that date before the first aid, September?
Wastewater, August thirteenth, wastewater treatment in, in the morning. After the utilities department presents their budget, they'll be presenting wastewater treatment one oh one. And then on September seventeenth, there's a stormwater work session. It's, I think it's six oh one or seven oh one? Seven oh one?
But it's on our calendars already.
It's all on your calendars, just a reminder, and for anybody watching that's interested in that. And thank you.
I think that should be very appropriate. We're just getting into the height of the hurricane season.
Yeah.
We can be discussing, you know, stormwater. So, hopefully, we'll have a lot of sympathetic people out there and not have any storms along the way, but couldn't be a more appropriate timing for my train of thought.
I'm not Catholic, so.
So, with that, we are adjourned.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, I just wanted to say, Assistant County Attorney Ann Morris has emailed me saying that we will be making a presentation to the board on the retail pet sales ordinance in October, so that narrows it down to either October eighth or October twenty-two. Those are your two regular meetings in that month.
We'll let Sherri decide.
Okay, nobody else? We now are adjourned.